Welcome to the Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 Work Session of the Falls Church City Council. Welcome back to school, everyone. It's time to get back into the routine here. But anyway, hopefully everyone had good summer holidays. I guess the first item on the agenda, Mr. Shields and Miller House, is there anything you had before that?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. We do have a staff report, and we have our guests here from community residences who can speak to where we are on the Miller House agreement. I'll just say very briefly, by way of introduction, I think we've made a lot of progress since the last time we were with you at work session several months ago, and so we'd like to report to you on that progress. The request is to schedule this for a referral to the Planning Commission at your next meeting a week from tonight on September 11th. Because this involves the disposition of city-owned property, it would go to the Planning Commission for its formal recommendation, and we also have additional boards and commissions we recommend that be referred to, and then come back to you in October for final consideration. And so let me turn it over to Nancy, or to Dana, to Dana Lewis, to further the introductions and report to you on the key terms that are in the staff report and in the term sheet that was in your packet for tonight.
Good evening. Dana Lewis with Housing and Human Services. As Wyatt said, we have Mary Jane Panek, who's here to answer the questions, and Nancy. So just by way of background, because it's been a while, and this process has been about four years, it seems like. So by way of background, just to refresh your memory, Community Residences was selected in 2015 when we had our PPA process to develop and operate a group home at city-owned land at 366 North Washington Street, which is where the Miller House is. It's between Sunrise and Christ Crossman. The property has been owned by the city since 1973, and the structure that is there was previously used as a group home for persons with disabilities. It's been vacant for many years, and public works has, you know, recommended that the site be demolished. It's in pretty terrible shape. Since Community Residences received their notice of intent from the city, they have obtained a grant in the amount of $300,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services with the understanding that it will be used to facilitate the expansion of Community Residences by at least four group home beds. And so they'll be able to use that money towards this project. If all goes well, a completed facility may be available by 2019, spring 2019 is what we're hoping. So tonight, we're here to discuss the request for council to first approve by resolution the comprehensive agreement between the City of Falls Church, Community Residences, and Community Havens, which is the property affiliate of Community Residences, to include the sale of city property and design construction of an operation of a residential group home. The comprehensive agreement has been provided a draft tonight, but it should be final by next week. There's only a few things that they're working on. Along with the comprehensive agreement, council is also asked to approve by ordinance the authorization of the sale to Community Havens Incorporated of city-owned property for the price of $1. The deed for the sale shall include a restrictive covenant on the use of the land and the city's rights to reclaim the land in the event of a change in use. The land will be used to construct a group home for five adults with disabilities with priority given to city residents. In addition, under the comprehensive agreement, any loan on the property will provide for the city's right to cure a default and take ownership of the property subject to the loan. So I'd specifically like to just point out two terms in the term sheet from the comprehensive agreement, and these have to do with the sale of the property. Number 11 says, and I'm going to read them because they're pretty important, "In the event that Community Havens, acting on the behalf of Community Residences, determines that it will no longer provide group home services on the land, the city will have the option to repurchase the home and the land. The total purchase price shall be of $1 for the value of the land plus the cost of design and construction of the home minus any grants received for such purposes. Depreciated over a period of 25 years plus recovery cost adjustment of $50,000. Thus, the amount will be cost minus the cost divided by 25 times the number of years the home has been operated, operational, plus $50,000. The recovery cost adjustment will be made if the property is not exempt from city property taxes during the period." We've provided you a depreciation schedule that's in your packet, and that was developed using a standard IRS schedule, and the Assessment Office has also reviewed. Number 12 in the term sheet is CH, Community Havens, Community Residences, may obtain a loan secured by the land only for purposes of financing the construction of the home and only after consent by the city, which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld. Should Community Havens obtain such a loan for purposes of constructing the home, the loan shall include terms that provide the city upon default by CR with a 30-day notice and opportunity to cure such default. In the event the city cures such default, then the city shall, under deed covenants, automatically become the owner of the land and home without further action, and the city shall be permitted to step into the shoes of Community Residences without regard to the loan.
With regard to that.
With regard, excuse me. Thank you very much. That's important. Upon such default, the city's ownership shall be without payment to CH, except insofar as the city assumes the payments under the loan. So we have also provided, along with the comprehensive agreement, a letter from Community Residences Bank, United Bank, outlining their financial support for the project, and like I said, with the depreciation schedule has been provided. And going forward, the timeline that we're looking at is September 11th, first reading and referral to the Planning Commission, Housing Commission, and Human Services Advisory Council, and then October 23rd, both items would be scheduled for public hearing and for council action. And then, like I said, Mary J. Panek is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for that informative presentation, for all the hard work you all have done over the past couple of years and a long road. Questions? Ms. Hardy?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your hard work on this. It's good to see that we've resolved some of the financing issues. I can't get my computer to turn on, but I had two questions. One about the terms that we just talked about. So if the group home ceases to operate, my understanding is the city will buy back at $1 plus the cost of construction with depreciation. And so I think on the depreciation schedule, is that the column that's labeled "total value"?
It's the far right. The far-right column is what the city would pay under Term 11.
So we're selling it to you for $1, and then if the home stops operating at year five, we should refer to row year five, the far-right column, which is total value, and that's what the city would have to pay in order to buy back the property and the house that would be constructed already?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any terms around what the city would do with the house or the operation of it? Do we specify whether we continue operating it, finding another operator? Like, is that something that we are obligated to do?
Do you want me to speak to it? Our thought is that this agreement is designed to deal with what is intended right now. If the city were to come into possession of this property, and in exchanging the land to Community Residences for the price of $1, the reason the city is doing that is in order to accomplish a public policy objective, which is to provide a group home for adults with disabilities. What this stands for is if that public purpose ends, then the land comes back into public option or into public ownership at the city council's option. And then at that time, the city council can decide what it will do with it at that point. Presumably, it will be to continue it with a different partner, but that's a decision that the city council could make if that event happens.
But it's not stipulated that that's what it has to stay as if the current operation ceased?
That is correct.
Okay. Second question. So we had part of the tour of the house in Arlington, which was really impressive. I think I loved all the finishes and all the different amenities for residences. I know with the financing issues we had, I think even when we did the tour, you all set the expectation that we shouldn't expect a similar quality type of house. I guess what is the new update on that? Could we get maybe either rough plans or a walkthrough of kind of what we should expect?
Sure. We don't have rough plans yet. All we had is the initial sketch, and our intention is to build the best quality house that'll fit the budget, including as many of those amenities as you saw. It also depends on the needs of the individuals. Individuals that moved into the home in Arlington, all but one, needed help in transferring. So that ceiling track system that you saw is going to depend on whether or not the individuals need that kind of support. We will do the roll-in showers and the wider hallways and that kind of thing, but some of those extra pieces are really dependent on the needs of the individuals.
I just want to make sure that with the budget constraints now, we weren't going to be precluding certain types of residents who might move in that might need those amenities.
Yeah.
Terrific. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all. May I ask a question about eligibility for those who would live in the house? So on line 15, 16, group home for five adults with disabilities with priority placement given to city residents. And then over on line 99 and 101 or so, it says, four persons and one additional person in support of living apartment, all of whom will be low-to-moderate-income persons with disabilities, selected by the Fairfax County CSB. So does that mean that if you're not a low-to-moderate-income person, even if you are a city resident, you would not be included in eligibility for this facility?
I believe that would be yes. And let me explain, what we're looking at is a four-bedroom, the upper part of the house is a four-bedroom licensed group home. So those individuals are truly extremely low income. They typically just have Medicaid, and their monthly income is around $700 a month. The apartment below, we're looking at someone that is, has more ability to be on their own and could potentially have a part-time job. A number of our individuals work at grocery stores as baggers or check, not checkers, but baggers or stockers, and they're able to provide, to have a little bit more income, but they never get above the medium income range. So we're really targeting that lowest population because that's the highest need at this point.
I think you sound like you're talking about their parents, maybe. Is that what you're sort of thinking? Like, is this financial aid for college?
Right, so I need to understand more about the legalities of how, you know, financial station is determined, and you guys are obviously, here in Smallville, you know, everything becomes personal very quickly. So, you know, the people who've come to us and spoken in support of this, some of them, I think, are people who had thought they might, you know, have a shot at getting into this facility for their children. Now, do their children's incomes stand apart from their parents' incomes?
Yes.
Good answer. Thank you.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Other questions? I've got a question, maybe for the city attorney, if I could. In looking at line 130 to, let's say, 133 on the staff report, it's talking about the recovery cost adjustment we made if the property is not exempt from city property taxes. What is, what if they are exempt? What happens then? If I cut you flat, will it take a second?
No, I think that if they get an exemption, then the $50,000 just drops out.
So is that shown? I didn't look at the chart. Of course, I can't read that small variety probably.
I'm not certain about the chart, but I know that it's in the agreement. I know the comprehensive agreement provides that in the, there's no $50,000 if there's a tax exemption.
Okay, so that's crystal clear in the documents? Because when reading this, it's not crystal clear to me with it.
I think it's pretty clear in the agreement.
Okay. All right, I'll take a closer look at that. Any other questions? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for getting it to this point. I think the document at the very back, which is from United Bank, is a document that no one could get earlier, and they had reservations about the entire structure, but after we urged you all to take a look at the clawback provision and having worked through that, I think that it's to everyone's satisfaction, and that is really my first question. So at this point, the bank, the city, and Community Residences are all in consistent agreement with the terms, and there are no other issues to work through? Is that correct?
I am working on just a couple clarification, not to the terms, because I think the term sheet was worked out earlier, but there's just a couple places in the agreement where we're still finalizing language, and I would characterize the points that we're talking about as very technical. Does the language reflect the agreement? But I think the agreement is understood and agreed to by all.
Okay, that's great. And if you could just explain the recovery cost once more, is this recovery cost the amount that would go to presumably the agent, which would be the bank, for the cost of the transaction? Is that something else?
I think that the $50,000 is just if we buy the property back, there was an agreement that we would pay that amount unless there was a tax exemption. I think recovery cost may be a fancy term for the basic payment that was agreed to.
Okay.
Is that wrong?
All right, just so long as we understand that. All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Snyder?
Can I just add one more thing? We are still looking for grant funding. We haven't given that up. The bank has agreed to have a conversation with us about a loan, a construction loan, but we are actually meeting with the Department of Community Development at the state level later this month, specifically for this project, to see if we can get some additional money to build it. The least amount of debt we can have on it obviously helps balance the budget, so if we can get it as grant funding or a minimal loan, like Virginia Housing Trust Fund, we have some properties where we were able to acquire them with a 1% loan in order to make the mortgage, something that would be workable for the budget. So we're going to continue to do that, but the fall back is going with the bank.
And this agreement would be applicable irrespective of whether you get a loan?
Absolutely.
All right. Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thanks a lot. I like the notion of partnership here to provide a valuable new service. So a couple of questions. Is there any assumption implied or stated that the city will provide any other support for the services in that house?
Other funding, like the Affordable Housing Fund?
Or other funding from the city?
No.
No? Okay, thanks. So the second question is, so how soon, under the worst case, could paragraph 11 be triggered? In other words, is there a term of agreement here that we could safely say we're going to get through at least three years or five years and hopefully indefinitely? But theoretically, could paragraph 11 be triggered within a year or within a few months?
Yeah, I would think that theoretically, it could be. I mean, there's some time deadlines for how construction is supposed to go. I think that, I mean, I think we all expect that would be extremely unlikely, but theoretically, if, you know, suddenly it became impossible to provide this kind of housing at the budgets that have been talked about for some reason, then it could, Community Residences could decide sooner that they just can't do the business or do the...
And under that scenario, we would have people there and a house that's just been built, and we would assume then the obligation for that and would have to hunt for alternative ways to provide this service. I'm just trying to do a worst-case analysis here. It's not that I certainly don't want it to happen, but...
Right. Well, it's not going to be for a couple of years for us to have people in the house, but I also think there's something, some provisions about moving the residents to other placements prior to Community Residences getting out of it.
And also working with another provider to take over. So, I mean, the intent certainly is for us to do that, and that's our goal, for the foreseeable future.
And that's our goal, too.
Right.
Thank you.
Maybe long after all of us, is that that house will operate and provide independence for those individuals forever and a day. If there comes a time when CR can't do that, the first line of a line would be to work with another provider to step in and make and provide those services for individuals. We take a lot of risk when we go into new buildings. In fact, the link at home that you saw, we opened a home in Prince William County, the individuals that came out of the training center, and just, man, it feels like yesterday, a couple of months ago, we opened another home down in the Burke area for individuals that all have different levels of needs, and at whatever those needs are, we will supply that. And that is a risk because we go in with a budget, not entirely knowing what their needs are, and we make those adjustments. And sometimes it takes six to eight months for that, the funding to level out to what those needs actually are.
But going back to the city attorney, you said there's a provision in the agreement that would talk about relocating before paragraph 11 would be triggered.
And I would have to look back at that, but I think there's all the notice provisions about time that we have several months, and we could find somebody else or move. And I don't recall it specifically. I know there have been some discussions, but the first option is to try to find somebody else. I, in my history of working in housing in Arlington, I kind of have worked with Community Residences for many years, and my sense is if they're not going to be able to make this work, nobody is, and we're going to be looking for something totally different. But I don't, I would, I need to get back to you on whether there's specifically a provision about taking care of the people, but I think there's a notice period of time before they can just walk away from the facility.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver?
So this is a partnership that both, that we all want to do, and I think in the questions from my colleagues tonight, I've heard a lot of the concerns that we have on the city side. So this question is for Community Residences, and I'm just curious, what is your big concern about this agreement at this point in time?
I wish I would, I had Arthur on my shoulder to tell, give me the answer to that question. I mean, we are committed to this project. I mean, Dana and I have worked together. I think I was a redhead back then, and now I'm all gray. But we want this to happen. As Carol said, we are the largest provider of this type of service in Northern Virginia, and we do it really well, and we take risks on projects like this where we really don't know what the needs of the individuals are. So we budget moderately, but know that there's an upside risk to that should the individuals that are recommended from the Community Service Board have higher needs, and then we work through that. We're a big enough company that we can take that in. We're not doing this to make money. We are doing this to provide services for individuals. And at the end of the day, it's providing the best service possible for those individuals at a tolerable expense, and we can do it.
So your concern is not necessarily with the provisions that the city has placed on you, but with just whether or not, you just don't know whether you can really provide the kind of level of service that you want for the individuals who get assigned here?
We can. We know that we can provide the service. Over the last several years, and maybe Nancy can speak to that more readily, with the final rule and the changes in the way individuals are funded, it does make it a bit of a challenge. But it's a matter of piecing together different services that make that package work for that individual. Somebody might need nursing services. Somebody might not leave the house, so then you have a different level of staffing required. And I think that CR does a great job in thinking through those and providing the kind of supports needed for those individuals so they're successful. And that's really what we want them to be, whoever they are. And, you know, in that first year, you have to take a risk in knowing that, did we guess right on the budget? And then in the future years, you make adjustments for that.
I think if you remember sort of the ballpark numbers that we were talking about in the beginning, the question was how much could five residents support in terms of debt? And it was about 600 or 650,000.
Right.
And that was going to be what they could have to build the house, because then that's debt they can work with, supported by these placements. So then if you look at the fact that now here's a $300,000 grant that's going to help that project, that's substantial in relation to what you, you know, what you can support, which you can still support with the people's funding, their Medicaid and things like that that come in, and then maybe there will be other loans that will help either reduce the debt or even provide the services more. So I think now we're in a pretty good spot compared to where we were when we were first working out this deal.
Right. But when we were first working on it, the price was around 600 or 700,000. Now we're talking around $900,000. Three years later, the cost of building has gone up, and we have to account for that in our budget. But we're comfortable that we are able, we will be able to get the right funding to make this work. It's just taking a long time. But I think we're addressing it with our partners at the state, which is how we got the first $300,000, and we'll continue to work with the other housing divisions, and we'll go back to VHDA. I know they don't do funding for group homes anymore, but this is a very special project and should have some merit with them as well.
Great. Well, why don't we go ahead and wrap up unless there's anything pressing? Thank you so much for all your fine work and your patience to get this to the finish line. So thanks again. Want to move on to the next item if we can. Mr. Shields?
Thank you. The next two items are requests to place on the consent calendar. And the first is state funding in support of the Aurora House. And the bad news is we've lost one stream of state funding. The good news is that Ms. Vincent, working with Mr. Conklin with Arlington County, have identified a way to address that. And so the request would be for the council to approve that strategy, and Nancy will describe that briefly. And then the next item on the consent calendar would be request is to endorse the Heal or Healthy Eating and Active Living Initiative, which came out from Vice Mayor Connolly from a VML conference, and Ms. Vincent has taken that ball and run with it, and we think it's a very positive thing.
What if you're not for healthy eating? Is there a...
Everyone has their...
Can I just ask why it's on the consent agenda?
Well, you could not have it on consent. The thought was just to have it go efficiently through, but that's all. And the reason it's on work session tonight is just to let you be aware that it's coming and have an opportunity for any questions tonight.
All right. Go ahead. It's the physical activity breaks for long meetings issue that I just want to know what that means, because if Ms. Hardy is like going to be doing yoga, she's going to show me up, so we can't have that. All right, Ms. Hardy, what do you have? What say you?
On the healthy initiative idea, so I saw that we're going to create like a cross-department committee to kind of develop policy recommendations. I want to see whether we can actually involve the schools. I know that they have a health and wellness committee, and I wonder whether this is a good opportunity to actually involve them to figure out if there's things that we can do across, really, the entire city, not just kind of city employees, but also school employees and our students, too.
All right. You're up. Welcome back.
Thank you. And I'll start with the state funding through the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act, and I'll start by giving you a little bit of history about the act. In 1995, the General Assembly passed the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act to establish a community-based system of progressive intensive sanctions and services that correspond to the severity of offense and treatment needs. So the purpose is to deter crime by providing immediate effective punishment that emphasizes accountability of the juvenile offenders for their actions, as well as reduces the pattern of repeat offending. This legislation substantially increased funding for community-based juvenile justice programs. In order to receive funding, a locality must have a plan for how they will use the funding. All 130... will use the funding. All 133 cities and counties in Virginia participate, and several localities have combined programs and funding across jurisdictions. Development of the plan requires consultation with judges, court services units, and Children's Services Act community policy and management teams. And this is an interagency body that manages the expenditure of state funding to serve children and families. And I sit on the team for Fairfax County, which serves Falls Church. I also have responsibility for developing and managing the plan for Falls Church. And for fiscal year 2018, this was done in conjunction with Arlington County. So for this, for the plan, there are no specific types of programs or services required. The intent is for programs and services to be developed to fit the needs of each particular locality. Since the inception of the act, the funding has been used in Falls Church to support operations at Aurora House. However, for fiscal year 2018, the Department of Juvenile Justice restricted use of the funds to moderate to high-risk juvenile offenders. Because both of its clients are low-risk, Aurora House will no longer be eligible to use the allocated funds. And I want to note that risk is different from level of service or treatment needs. In order to recoup some of the funds, Arlington and Falls Church agreed to combine their plans and use the funds to support programs in Arlington that serve higher-risk clients in the detention diversion program, the after-school Young Achievers programs, and for child-specific, high-risk children placed at Argus or Aurora House. Under our agreement with Arlington, the additional revenue that they receive will be credited and reduce the rate we are charged for placements in those programs. And then correspondingly, the credit that they now receive from Falls Church will be eliminated, and Arlington will be a higher, charged a higher rate. So the net fiscal impact to the city will be about $23,500. Council approval is required for participation in the joint plan. And if approved, the city manager will submit a letter to that effect to the Department of Juvenile Justice, and the Arlington Board will do the same. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope. Sounds good. Keep on tracking.
Okay. So members of the city council attended a meeting of the Virginia Municipal League and learned about the Healthy Eating Active Living Campaign, or HEAL. And Vice Mayor Connolly advanced the initiative. Would you like to say something before I continue?
I'll say thank you for continuing to advance the initiative. This was at last October's VML conference, and there were at least five city council members there. And as they presented the recognition, several of us said, we're doing all those things. We should do this, too. So I appreciate that you have pulled this all together, and I'm intrigued to hear what you have next.
Thank you. Okay. So this is an initiative of the Institute for Public Health Innovation, and it's in partnership with both the VML and the Maryland Municipal League. And it seeks to create policies to meet needs in the areas of physical activity, active transportation, land use, healthy food access, and municipal workplace wellness. Participating localities are eligible for designation as a Healthy Eating Active Living Community. So I, along with staff from planning and recreation parks, completed an assessment that identified areas that could benefit from having policy direction. I also spoke to all the city department directors and the employee advisory committee, and was met with across-the-board enthusiasm for the initiative. A cross-departmental, sorry, a cross-departmental team has been recruited that will further determine needs, seek community and business input, and make policy recommendations. The ultimate goals of the initiative are to reduce healthcare costs, create safer community environments, improve quality of life, and attract economic development. The resolution in front of you has been reviewed and approved by the HEAL staff, although you're welcome to make any changes. If you pass it, and if you pass it next week, the city will get the use of the HEAL City Town logo and media relations assistance, recognition at VML events, and technical assistance on policy work, which will include regional trainings, webinars, staff onsite and by phone. So what I'm requesting is that city council pass the resolution and participate in the HEAL initiative. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Vice Mayor Connolly, for spearheading this. Any questions from anyone?
Can I make a comment?
Of course.
I still think that if we're going to really do this justice, that it doesn't, it should not be buried on the consent agenda, but it should be a public resolution at the beginning of the meeting. I know you want to be efficient and save time, but if we're really going to be committed to this, we need to make a public proclamation of it.
That's right.
I agree with Councilmember Oliver.
I agree with Councilmember Oliver and Councilmember of the city.
As long as we keep on getting these orange Cheetos coming for snacks, I think I'm okay.
Snickers bars, huh?
All right. Thank you very much. It sounds good. Oh, yes, of course.
As Ms. Hardy mentioned earlier, it would be great if there was a way to combine the efforts that the schools are doing along with what's going on in government. And then will you be able to present to us sort of the matrix of what you've come up with? Will that come next after we pass the resolution?
Yes. So I will absolutely outreach to the schools to include them in any of this. And then, yes. So what we'll do is get the committee together, do outreach to businesses, to community groups, come up with some policy recommendations, and then report back within six months. So we'll have a set timeframe.
I was going to mention, right, Chamber of Commerce, because they had a whole day dedicated to businesses in the city who were promoting good health habits and so forth. And so you should check with Sally Cole, and she'd like to be in on this, too.
I will do that.
Great. Thank you so much. Look forward to hearing more from you.
You're welcome. And thank you again to Vice Mayor Connolly for bringing this forward.
Sounds good. Thank you. All righty. We're ready to move on.
We are. Thank you, Ms. Vincent. If I could invite Mr. Jay Brown, and Jen Boss, and Ted Risher forward. And Jim Snyder is here as well. And Jim, could you come up to be part of the discussion as well?
I think we've got enough chairs.
Bob, if you want to come, too, you're on the, that working group, so if you'd like to come on up.
You can sit here, sir.
Yeah, we can get everybody to the table. Yeah. So we're joined by Mr. Jay Brown, Ms. Jen Boss, and Mr. Ted Risher with Alvarez and Marcel. And they're here to talk with the council tonight on the strategic marketing roadmap. And what we're talking about tonight is on the 34-acre campus, high school campus site, we're talking about the 10 acres that if the referendum should be approved by the voters this fall on November 7, that we would then proceed through the steps that will be described tonight to, in a, in a public, a very transparent, but also very strategic way, take the land to market in a way that would maximize the value for the city and minimize the risk for the city. And that's really what the task was, to get the expertise of Alvarez and Marcel, who have helped public institutions across the country do just that. And so I'm going to turn it over to them for the presentation. Let me get it, a couple of slides teed up. The document that's before you is this 23-page roadmap document, and we'll go through the highlights of it. To frame the issue, just so everybody kind of understands what it is we're talking about in terms of the big blocks of time. And this is lined up also with the school engineering and design process. That would be happening concurrently with this marketing process. A couple of the key dates for us to think about, and I'll just name three of them, and then the rest are all the details we'll fill in. But the idea would be to do comp plan and zoning by the end of first quarter next year. And so, in other words, by March next year. We would also have drafted and issued an RFQ, which would be the first step in the procurement process. We would do that by March next, 2018. We'd issue an RFP, the formal RFP for the property, in the July timeframe, or at the end of the second quarter of 2018. We'd be evaluating the responses in the fall, and we'd be negotiating an agreement in the fall through the winter months with the idea of a conclusion with an agreement in hand by March 2019. That, again, lines up with the architecture and design process for the school, where they would notionally be done and going for permits in that March timeframe, and tend to be, and tend to be under construction in early summer, May-June timeframe. So I wanted you to have that sort of big framework in terms of what it is we're talking about now. For all the details and the interesting parts of it, let me turn it over maybe first to Mr. Brown for an introduction, and then Ms. Boss, I think, will provide additional information as well.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Mayor, is it on?
You see the green light, and then you're good to go.
Okay.
You'll need to see it brighter.
Brighter than that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, there we go. Okay. On green. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much. Today is really kind of special in terms of our engagement with you all. The presentation of the strategic marketing roadmap is sort of the culmination of our first phase of work since we got engaged with you all in June. In June, we were engaged. We did the valuation analysis for the site. We've been working with Mr. Shields and the city and the task force to really make sure that we understood your priorities and your concerns with respect to the site. And during that same time, we've been also working on this strategic marketing roadmap that we're going to present to you tonight. So we're excited about the stage we're in. And so we're going to give you a certain amount of detail around what the strategic roadmap looks like. But before Jennifer gets started, I wanted to just give you some context for where the strategic marketing plan fits into the broader schedule. Are we controlling the slides, or...
You are now.
Oh, okay.
Use the roller on top.
All right. Let's see. There we go. So this schedule, Mr. Shields sort of talked broadly about it, and this actual schedule here should look fairly familiar. This is the city's schedule for the broader project. The green bars represent the school activity, the sort of pinkish bars represent the commercial activity, which is our focus. Our focus is on the commercial activity. But what we're going to be talking about is the strategic marketing roadmap, which covers the 17-month period from the time when you have hopefully a successful referendum to the time that we select the development partner to begin to work on the actual development of the site. So that's roughly between November of '17 and March of '19. That's the time period that we're going to be covering in the strategic plan. And as Mr. Shields mentioned, during that time, you'll also be working on the design and procurement for the school while that's going on. Those things will be happening concurrently. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of the context in terms of the timeframe. With that, Ted is going to talk about some of our recommendations, and then Jennifer's going to dive into the details of the plan.
Mr. Shields, can you go, I think it's one slide back?
I'm controlling this slide.
Oh, okay. Then I'll ask Mr. Brown. There you go. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be in front of the council again, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Shields, and all the staff. As Mr. Brown said, it's been a pleasure working with everybody over the last several months and really refining our collective ideas in terms of the site's value and what the city's goals are, and what the best way to go, what the best process is to achieve those goals. The strategic marketing plan is really built around five principles, and these aren't going to be revelatory to anybody here who's been, who's been going on this, or participating in this process with us. But let me summarize them on the high level, and then Ms. Boss will get into the details of them. First of all, you know, launching the entitlement process prior to the solicitation really serves the interest of all parties involved. It allows the city and its stakeholders to participate in a very reasonable and well-thought-out zoning process to make sure that we create the development envelope for the site, not only in terms of density and height and other physical aspects of the site, but also with regards to use and the types of activity we want to see on the site, the types of commercial activities that I know are so important, not only for creating an 18- to 24-hour environment at the site and invigorating the strip, but also in terms of long-term revenue potential and taxes for the city that are just as important when considering the proposals we're going to get. It also creates an air of certainty for the proposers that are going to be tracking this solicitation, are going to be bidding on the site. The more risk we can remove from this transaction, the more well-qualified bidders will feel comfortable in investing the time and effort to generating quality proposals for us to consider. So as we've discussed before, and as we've all agreed on, we think completing this process prior to this issuance of the solicitation is key in achieving maximum value and in realizing as many of the city's goals as possible. Number two is to conduct a risk assessment and work to mitigate those risks with the city. One of, you know, the pillars of our work is to not only maximize value, but also clearly identify and realistically mitigate all risks that the city might encounter along the way. One of the ways we've done this, as we've discussed many times in the past, is, you know, appropriately offshoring risk to developers and the capital markets, where they belong, where they can be priced effectively and competitively to the benefit of the city. So as we go forward and initiating Phase Two, we plan to go through a more formal process of identifying those types of risks, making sure that in the drafting of the solicitation documents, it's made clear to the markets what risks we'll expect third-party development partners to take and what risks the city's willing to take. Number three, remain open to a variety of transaction structures. You know, what we want to be able to do is create an environment, and I think we've achieved that conceptually with the two-step RFP process, where bidders know exactly the construct within their, the construct they're working within to come up with a proposal, but to allow enough flexibility for creativity and allow enough flexibility for somebody to come to us with a program that maybe nobody has come up with or thought of seriously that may actually produce benefits that we hadn't foreseen. So we want to make sure that we're open to ideas. We're certainly open to shorter ground these terms, which would shorten the time that the city could get access back to the land that, from an institutional or a civic perspective, might be important for it. We're going to create an environment where we can adequately, you know, adequately evaluate the costs and benefits of each aspect of the proposal. Recommendation number four, which is essentially the creation of the two-step RFP, we want a process that is aggressive, but it is also careful and measured. We want to make sure that all the respondents are qualified from a capitalization perspective, from an experience perspective, are comfortable with the transaction structure, and that we're convinced can perform. We also want that creativity. So we want to create this conceptual first step to initially, along with the results from the roadshow, get a gauge on what the market is thinking about for this site in terms of program. And that is going to help us craft the second phase, the second step of the RFP, which will be a harder demand from potential bidders, not only in terms of capitalization, but also in terms of, we want you to present us the program you think is viable and that you feel comfortable committing to closing with, and that you are going to be comfortable committing to day one after selection to closing on with this city. We have an aggressive timeframe, but we plan to present it in such a way so that development partners are absolutely clear on what our expectations are. And then number five is to close the transaction under the terms envisioned. The entire, what can be concluded as a success for this entire process will be to close on the deal that we selected, when we select our development partner. Everything that we're putting in in terms of risk analysis and the drafting of the solicitation documents, down to the construction of the actual agreements that will serve as the contractual relationship between the developer and the city, will be basically targeted towards that goal, which is to close with absolute certainty on the transaction that we think we're getting from our development partner when we make the selection. So those are the five basic controlling tenants of this document. Now Jen's going to get into some further detail.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, I'm here to get into the rubber meeting the road. You'll notice in the report, if you can't see this on the screen, on page three of the report, you'll be able to see that same chart so that you can follow along with me as well. You'll notice that there were five recommendations that Ted mentioned, and each one of those line up to one of the key areas of focus within the strategic roadmap. And there are lots of different activities here, but I'd like to break it down into three big buckets to help you follow along with where we are. The first one is the preparation phase, which spans the October through February-March timeframe. The second is solicitation, which spans the March-through-August timeframe. And then finally, negotiation, which is after selection. I'm beginning to work through all those details so that we finally can close on the terms that we've all agreed to, as Ted mentioned. So if we start up at the entitlement phase, we are looking to have the small-area plan, which is already underway, finalized by the end of this year. And as part of that process, the stakeholder engagement that has been going on, in part for the small-area plan as well as for the bond referendum, would continue. Beyond the bond referendum, we would see that stakeholder engagement shifting to be more focused on this site and the school as well following the November election. A key piece of this beyond the small-area plan from a planning perspective is subdividing the parcel, which currently is just a single parcel for both the educational and the commercial uses. And we won't be able to convey that parcel in any way, whether through ground lease or otherwise, to a private developer unless it is its own subdivided parcel. And then, as Mr. Shields mentioned, a critical component of entitlement, and as Ted alluded to, a critical component of certainty for the development community, is having the land use and zoning approved at the site so that developers know exactly what they can construct as they're putting their proposals out into the market. And what you'll notice if you look into the details here is that while we're not projecting that the land use and zoning be complete by the time we're issuing the RFQ, we will be far into the process to provide a level of certainty at the Q-stage and certainly will be complete by the time we're asking for refined proposals in the Step Two RFP. I'm sorry, I said RFQ. I meant Step One RFP, the conceptual RFP. Moving on to the risk assessment piece, in the report, you'll see that there is already a conversation with regard to many different risks, some of which we've presented to you already in our past conversations. For each of those, we've started to outline methods that we can use to mitigate them, but we know that as we continue to go through entitlement and begin the developer roadshow, which we'll talk about in just a moment, there may be additional risks that come to light, and we'll be working very carefully throughout that March timeframe during that preparation phase to mitigate those risks. Another key piece, and the final key piece of preparation, is making some decisions about transaction structure. There are a number of concepts that this group, as well as the Economic Working Group and staff, have not yet fully landed on in terms of an upfront payment amount to potentially stow away, to pay down the debt on the school bond, the potential for condos at the site, the desire to maintain ownership over the entire site, specific development preferences in terms of the program, and even the value of certain public finance tools such as a community development authority, whether or not that makes sense. And so part of the preparation phase will be thinking about each of those key decisions and figuring out what the city's preferences are. And we certainly have thoughts on each of those that we'll share with you and work through them with you. But before we go out with the Step One, the conceptual RFP, we'd want to have a sense of where you all land on each of those. And part of the purpose of that will be to vet those concepts yet again with the development community in that first step RFP. And that way, when you go out with the second step, you'll have much more of a clear indication about where private developers fall on each of those. If there's something that you really want and they come back and say, "This just isn't feasible," you still have another bite at the apple before going out with a final set of requirements in your Phase Two document. Moving on to procurement, we start to get into that second phase, that solicitation phase. And this is just as much about marketing as this entire document is, as it is about merely crafting an RFP and going through the motions of a procurement. A critical component for a successful project here is attracting a solid set of qualified developers. And to do that, we want to make sure that we take a set of solicitation documents, the Step One and the Step Two documents, that will address some of the concerns that a developer might have. We want this to be realistic from a project execution perspective. And one way to do that is to go on a developer roadshow. I know that Mr. Snyder has already started to have conversations, Jim Snyder, has already started to have conversations with various developers who may be interested in the site. And we would want to see that activity expanded and formalized with a set of marketing materials to make sure that people are aware of what the opportunity is here, to be able to vet some of the city's wants, desires, and needs. And that will help inform the Step One document, where we'll be formally vetting those concepts. There will be other marketing activities, such as notifying industry organizations, working with the media. We saw last week that there was already a Washington Business Journal article about the site, and we anticipate that with that level of interest, we could continue to see that kind of activity, not just in the Business Journal, but certainly the local papers, as well as some of the other regional publications. Mr. Shields mentioned a couple of key dates, and I just want to repeat some of those for you. The Step One RFP would be issued in March. The Step Two RFP would be issued in June. And then selection would be expected in July. Now, in between those timeframes, there would obviously be evaluations occurring. And one of the critical components of the evaluation will be fiscal impact studies. We know that you have a robust fiscal impact analysis tool already, and we would be working with the EDA to make sure that the long-term benefits of the proposed developments met your needs, the same whether the upfront value would for some of your immediate needs. Moving on from there, once we get to August, we will have selected a development partner and will begin the negotiation. One critical piece before we jump down there, something very important within the procurement phase is the drafting of the form transaction documents. Mr. Fisher mentioned that this is an aggressive timeframe. And to make this feasible, it's going to be critical that we're able to provide form transaction documents in the Step Two RFP to give developers a sense of what some of the city's requirements would be, not just in terms of the development program, but more importantly, some of the key business terms, things that you might require that they might not be familiar with or that they might have to analyze, consider, take to their financing partners to make sure that they can make that deal term work. And the earlier that we can get those terms out to them, the better, because it will save us time during the negotiation phase. So you'll see on the schedule here that we would like to see those transaction documents get started as early as January. As soon as we know that we have a project, as soon as that bond referendum is successful, we would like to be working with council to get those documents going so that when we go out with the RFP, the Phase Two RFP, we can include those and ask for their exceptions to those documents or any issues they might have. That can also be an evaluative tool. If you have a team that comes back and they have many, many substantive edits to those documents, you may not want to consider working with them any further, because you might never meet that middle ground and you'd take up valuable time negotiating with a partner that you were never going to see eye to eye with. So that's another critical component for an expeditious and successful process. Just want to spend a couple more minutes on the negotiation phase to talk through what we would recommend at this point in terms of the transaction documents. What we would envision is some sort of an agreement to enter or an exclusive rights agreement. And that document would govern access to the site so that the developer could conduct due diligence. It would outline some of the major business terms, such as payment amounts and timing, closing deadline, to make sure that everyone was clear on when the final documents needed to be signed. That would be a fairly quick turn. Just in that first month, you'd want to get that signed so that they could get started with their due diligence as quickly as possible. And then following that, the other document that we would conceive of working on is long-term ground leases. We have, and that document would govern things like reversion at the end of the term, what happens to the project at the end of the ground lease term, what policy goals are required, whether it's affordable housing or others, insurance requirements, mortgages, who can do what in terms of mortgaging the site, how does subordination work? All of that would be in there and much more. And we've given ourselves quite a bit of time here. There's a six-month timeframe to negotiate that. We've got seven months overall for negotiation, which we think is sufficient despite the level of complexity in this transaction.
Can I make one note on that? In our discussions about this timeframe, that was something that we pushed for, is to give us time during that stage in the process. But in order for us to have that time, that means we need to be very efficient in our decision-making in the earlier stages. So doing the entitlement process, we could easily spend 18 months on the entitlement process. We need to spend like two months on that. And there's other examples of that, but that's the trade-off. And we think that's the most valuable time for the city council, is with your developer partner, your top-ranked one in hand, working through all these details.
So that is it for our formal presentation.
Sure, Vice Mayor Connolly. Absolutely. Before you do, I just want to thank you all. I know the Economic Working Group has been working with you for a period of months now and maybe some of the council folks as well, but you guys have done a great job. We really appreciate getting us where we are today. But I wanted to say that before we get started with the questions. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thank you for that really thorough presentation. Every time I sit in a meeting, I learn a lot from all of you, so thank you. My question is about the developer partner. How closely, and maybe this is for Mr. Shields, how closely do we expect the developer partner to work with the school developer partner? Is that, how is that going to work? Or is that something that'll just evolve?
They need to work together. There's a really important interface between the school project and this commercial development process. So they need to work closely together. I think that's another argument in favor of trying to get to that point where you have a top-ranked respondent that then you're working with, because that can, the earlier that is, the better that interface is going to go.
And is there a chance that it could end up being the same developer? No chance?
No, that's a possibility. What we envision through this process, though, is a master developer that has expertise in delivering world-class, placemaking, commercial development. And it's possible that that entity also builds schools. That's possible.
But we're not expecting...
We need to be open to the possibility that that will not be the case. And that would be fine. The two can work well together.
Yes, Mr. Young.
I just want to clarify. My conceptualization of this is the schools will have a partner in the sense that they will have a general contractor building a school that's been designed by their architect as opposed to developing anything. So the necessary coordination will between a developer who will probably hire his own general contractor, it's a whole different kind of thing.
I would just, I think that's absolutely right. I would just add to that, there is, depending on who the general contractor is for the school, when they hear about this opportunity and the market starts to talk, my guess is you'll probably get that general contractor, if they are experienced doing other stuff, the developers bidding on this will be interested in potentially teaming with them and talking to them. So there could very well be some overlap at the general contractor level.
Okay, other questions? Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. I echo the Vice Mayor's comments. Thank you for the thorough presentation. The former project management man loves these charts. So I do have some scheduled questions to make sure I'm understanding. So based on the timeline that we anticipate, we finished negotiating the ground lease in Q1 of 2019. Is that when we also could reasonably expect maybe the first payment? Or do you think a negotiation could result in payments earlier?
I mean, I think we're thinking that there may be deposits earlier, but if we ultimately go with a fully capitalized ground lease, that probably wouldn't be, that wouldn't be paid out until you actually close on the ground lease. But we often will recommend various deposits along the way that, but, you know, those really go into an escrow account and not really for you, so I would say at closing.
Yeah, as envisioned now, I think we would envision some kind of substantial deposit, but nothing that you would see fit to apply against your bond indebtedness for the school at ERA execution and then the first significant deposit at ground lease execution, which is currently envisioned quarter one of '19.
Okay. I really liked the discussion you all had on risks in your document. And so I think one of the risks that we all have been struggling with is really the timing risk between school construction and when we can realize the money from this. And so I think one thing that'll be really important for us to talk about with the community is what that timing looks like. So as we get this schedule now, it's more refined, I think we need to be able to communicate that, hey, we're going to start school construction at this period. We're going to have a period of 12 to 24 months maybe before we might get the first set of payments and then three, five years maybe until we actually get revenue from that site. So I think those types of timing, I think windows are important to be able to talk about now that we have a little more clarity in what we think a proposed schedule looks like. Another question on schedule. So it looks like we're trying to parallel path several things kind of in the Q4-Q1 period of this coming year, just to, given that it's a really aggressive schedule, are there other places that we should be either accelerating or where we could parallel path things? Because it looks like the rest of the schedule is fairly sequential. And I think ultimately, my concern is, how do we bring money earlier to minimize that timing risk?
The biggest challenge with trying to accelerate any of the other processes is that a lot of this has to do with timing, time for the solicitations to be on the street. So we have our preparation time, much of which is overlapping other preparation activities. Once it's out on the street, there's not a whole lot more that we can do. You'll see the doubled-up area where we're preparing the Step Two RFP when the Step One is out. Beyond that, we have to wait for proposals before we can evaluate. We have to evaluate before we can select. So unfortunately, these are all critical path items that you can't overlap once you get into that solicitation phase.
Got it. Absolutely. I just want to make sure we don't short-change, obviously, that process, that we clearly get the best proposals that come forward, but at the same time, think about any creative ways where we could again minimize the risk for the city and the timing gap. One other question on schedule, and then I have some other questions. Improvements to sites, does the schedule account for, do we need to think about any upfront infrastructure improvements that the city needs to take on? Or are we assuming that the developer will take care of all of it and we don't need to plan to do anything in advance of going out with RFPs?
I will say that the development budget, the notional budget we used to create the results for Phase One did include a sizable amount of money for not only site work and remediation, but also basic infrastructure improvements of the site. So it's an open-ended answer right now, but in terms of the valuation results we got and the range we produced, it did account for that. So it's something the city can consider when conceptualizing how we'll offer the site to the market.
Last question. So assuming the referendum gets passed in this November and we proceed with this project, do you all have thoughts or recommendations on best practice for like a governance structure? Do you envision kind of the Economic Working Group kind of being a similar body that continues through this process, that can evaluate, you know, RFP writing, the first round of proposals? Do you envision a different group? And then also in terms of like a lead city point person? Like right now, I know it's kind of an all-hands-on-deck, it's a team effort across the city manager and various other folks in City Hall. In the past, do you see projects like this run by kind of a head honcho? And is that something that we should consider investing in? Because clearly, this will be the biggest, the most important project we take on in the city, so we want to make sure that we've got the right resources to take care of this too.
I think that's a great question, and it varies from jurisdiction, jurisdiction client to client. But I think on a project like this, certainly having the planning department professionals, you know, lead and be the face of it, I think is really great. And it's also really important to kind of de-politicize... And it's also really important to kind of de-politicize the process. And so staff is more important with all due respect than, you know, political participants in the process. At least that's been our experience when we're in that evaluation stage. So I think the working group would probably be great for helping to look at proposals and evaluate, but I'd want to talk with our team and with the city about making sure that we just don't create too many opportunities for folks to try to influence the process. I mean, we really try to keep it pretty procurement-sensitive. And so, but normally it is a staff-led process who we report to, and the staff drive most of the inherently governmental decisions that would occur throughout the evaluation process, and we would advise on all those decisions.
So maybe kind of a future topic, we can have a city manager, whether we're right staff to kind of take this on or whether we need to think about pulling a resource in.
And I would just also add to that, we have situations where some jurisdictions' procurement process don't allow for like consultants like us to really, you know, sort of make a recommendation as to who you should select, do evaluations, and then have you vet those internally and make a decision. And then some outsource all of that to us, and they ultimately just take the package and make a decision. So it's really up to you how you want to do it. We have some jurisdictions that just don't have the staff support. And so we receive the bids in our offices, we create a special room that if people want to come in and look at them, who are authorized to look at them, because some of our clients just don't have the staff support to do it. Others have all the staff they need, and we really just sit back and advise on the things that they don't have the expertise to advise in. So I think you've got to think about, you know, all of that.
I realize, actually, one more question. I saw that one of the key recommendations was being open to different transaction structures for the eventual deal. One of the things I think we previously talked about is Virginia has some concern or law around a limit on how long jurisdictions can have for ground leases, like a 40-year term, is that right? Has that been resolved or is that still kind of an outstanding thing we need to manage?
Do you want to, because you had provided some, we had heard that and we had done the one transaction with Fairfax County at the Laurel Hill site, which was a long-term ground lease, but then we had heard that they may have had the ability to do it, but you may not. And Wyatt, I know you looked at some...
Carol, do you want to speak to it?
Carol, do you want the wireless? Is that easier?
I think that there is that limitation, and when we got closer, we would look at ways to, the main way that jurisdictions get around that is they have the property held by the IDA or the EDA for a period of time because they don't have the 40-year restriction. So there are ways to get around it, but we'd have to work that out as we got closer.
If we couldn't get around it, does a 40-year then depress the value?
That would be a problem. That would be a very serious problem. I mean, we're seeing ground leases that can get done in the 55, 60-year range, depending on what the uses are, but much below that, it's a problem. And even that would be discounted from the values we've been, you know, talking to you about. So yeah, that would be a pretty serious problem and have to work out.
Given that a lot of our modeling for tax rate and the financing plan, key assumption is the value we get from the transaction, let's make sure that I guess we can work out what this looks like so that we don't try to have to solve this 40-year thing at the last minute.
Well, that's right. The fee simple sale is an option, and that's at the value or, you know, possibly, at any rate, that's basically right there in the ballpark of the value. And then the ground lease with a longer term, I think, what was the minimum term that you all envisioned for the ground lease?
You know, customarily, we deal with 99-year ground leases, but we've also executed transactions for 75 and 80 years. From a net present value basis, there's no difference virtually between 70, 80, 90 years. However, you will see some incremental changes in value. The problems really occur in the 40 to 50 range where, you know, then it starts to back up against the longer-term financing that most developers will bring to the project and then let us start to question whether or not there will be enough term to potentially overcome a downturn in the cycle or something like that and be able to repay the debt. So, you know, we didn't, we customarily just assume a 99-year ground lease, and then we invite developers to bid in their most aggressive fashion to shorten it up to see if there's any, you know, if there's any way to shorten that without a sizable reduction in value and then present that option to the client.
If I could be a little more specific, my guess request is, given that we can either, I guess, get it changed at the General Assembly, so now is probably the time to prepare for that for the session. Can we do that, Carol?
It's a constitutional requirement.
Okay. So it's not even something that they could pass?
No, it couldn't be done in a general assembly.
Got it. Let's make sure we have a plan on how we're going to work that out. Because I don't think we want to lose that long-term ground lease as an option. Like you said, be open to different transaction structures. I don't think we want to be boxed in and only have the sale option.
And we've really, and I think, you know, in working with staff, we've really looked at that as a very desirable option, given that it is adjacent to educational uses and that it is in the gateway to the city on Route 7. So we wanted to have that be a viable option for the city, assuming that it wanted to maintain control over that site. The other thing, too, is there are also potential other, you know, ways to access value with the city maintaining the fee underneath the development. So we definitely want it to be an option, but agree that we have to settle that issue before too long.
Okay, other questions? Comments? One, I've got one or two for you then. So you'd mentioned questions need to be answered. Can we put together either staff or you all, a list of the questions you think need to be answered? And if they're in some ways chronological, whatever order it might be, if not, just give us the list. And if there are deadlines you believe they need to be answered by a certain day or time or whatever before we can do something else, let us know that so that we can really get on right now what we need to do to lay the groundwork to get this done in a timely fashion. Okay, great. Mr. C.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I have not been following your work in perhaps as much detail as others here have. So I think in many ways, it's probably to manage with the overall process. As you know, or may have suspected, or may have even been told, that we've run down this road before. And the hurdles to completing those were numerous. And I just want to interject a cautionary note here that when you think that 180 days or half a year, two quarters is enough for the entitlement process, you may be surprised. The city is, it's not really politicization per se, but it's small enough that everybody has a stake in its future, so, and everyone feels compelled to be able to tell you what they think the future ought to hold. And some of this is obviously in dissonance. So I think you're perhaps expressing a wish that staff will drive this and it'll all be done and you can cloak many things under a procurement-sensitive shield, but I can assure you that's probably not going to be sufficient. So you need to be prepared for that. There are other things here that, as we go to market, if we see a huge block of apartments, you can be sure there's going to be huge resistance to that. Could be enough to make that entitlement discussion a very long time. So I just want to say you ought to be prepared for that. They're running down the road very quickly, and there could be a curve here without many signs there that when you reach that, you'll understand when you run out of road. Nonetheless, I think it's a good start. You've obviously put a lot of thought into this, so I look forward to additional thinking on where the hurdles are. I think that's what the mayor's trying to get at with regard to questions. So if we're going to try to get the city behind this effort in a meaningful way, then these questions need to be presented earlier rather than later. The reason you guys are here is because we decide as a political body that the lack of transparency just wasn't going to get us a project. So, thank you very much.
Also along the lines of my comment earlier, I wonder if you give some thought as well, you don't have to give us ideas now, but thoughts about things that we need to do external to the property. For example, a street grid, you know, how that might influence a procurement or the desirability of the property. So for example, if we, the street grid goes onto the school site, for example, and we're going to be telling a school architect how to design the school. And so I think if there's input that needs to be given to the school site about how to design their half of the property in a way that will maximize the value, I think we ought to have that in mind before we start telling, cut the school folks loose. And I think the same thing would be applicable to our neighbors, Virginia Tech and UVA. For example, we want to straighten out the street grid or a grid that goes through their property, or that'd be the optimal use for our site. Then I think we want to be having those conversations so that we can increase certainty for developer that this is how the road grid will be, or an optimal road grid. Or if their utilities need to be pulled off-site when you need easements to maximize the value from off-site. In other words, storm sewer, sanitary, whatever it is, I know you guys aren't engineers, we're not expecting you to do that, but I think just in general, with your level of experience in development, you probably can offer some ideas. And if you include that in the timeframe or the timetable as well, so, because we are having ongoing discussions with UVA, Virginia Tech, Metro, things like that even as well, the Metro site, you know, how can we maximize value for our site through Metro? Whether that's pedestrian ingress egress, whether that's some kind of vehicular ingress egress. So the kind of the pieces, not just from our site, but if you'd be thinking bigger than that, because I think we can maximize value if we really think holistically of the whole site.
Well, Mayor, before, and I agree with you on that, actually, that's, you know, I don't want to get into that kind of detail, but, you know, certainly it's possible that any of the off-takers here, whether it's one whole entity which is preferred and they do the whole thing, and they inform with regard to a set of standards on how the entire site gets developed, as well as how it interconnects or takes advantage, including the uses of adjacent properties. But they could very well say that, and you'll learn this very early on, as you work through the entitlements, you may come up with developers to say, well, okay, you know, we can meet 80% of what the city wants, and what you're telling us that is desired here, but in order to do that, you're going to have to lay down the infrastructure. And so we know that could be as much as 30% of the cost. They want finished lots at that point, right? So it puts us in a kind of different position at that point. And so, you know, I think that as you work through your risk mitigation analysis, that you ought to be sensitive to that. But I certainly do agree with the mayor that we need to be not only mindful, but proactive with adjoining properties. I'm not really sure, City Manager, whether that's in the scope of work.
Well, Jim Snyder's here to talk about the planning for the site, if we have questions on that. That's, you know, we've had lots of discussions with Alvarez and Marcel, kind of what the small area plan is coming out with. And that's also informed the school design. So maybe we could just speak to that, kind of where we are in that process as well.
Yes, we have been looking at several different options, trying to see how the space might be subdivided or parceled, if you will. It looks like we have about 9.7 acres, I think, after you look at what schools need. So the placement of roads, the coordination of infrastructure, all will be important, particularly with the option schools are looking at where you have maybe a large field at, it's kind of the meeting point between the commercial project and the school project. That has opportunity, I think. Trying to work, we've laid out suggested grid patterns through our consultants who've done work looking at traffic, how those will all work out when you get a developer, what kinds and sizes of parcels they will actually need. We don't know for sure, but we've suggested a scheme that uses kind of a central green space to create parcels that can be developed on either side of it and connect school with the Haycock Road and the shopping area to the east. So we think that can be a guiding concept. We want to leave it, I think, flexible enough so that the developer needs to combine two blocks or three blocks to make something happen that can be done. It will be tricky, I think, working with the adjoining properties of Virginia Tech, UVA, in terms of Fairfax County. We certainly are suggesting what those, where those connections want to be, so that'll be, I think, part of the smaller plan to suggest those, but those will have to be coordinated through and with Fairfax. So it'll take a lot of coordination, I think, with our adjoining county and also VDOT, you know, on Route 7 in Womata. The stakeholders meetings we had earlier on, I think, created a lot of relationships that we're trying to follow up on, and those have been fruitful. We've been able to talk to property owners and VDOT and Fairfax County. I think, for example, one of the things that came out was the idea of connecting Route 66 with the parking at the Metro. So that plan is going forward, planned for VDOT to connect that exit off of 66 so that it can go over, connect over Route 7 and get people to the parking on the Metro more readily. That'll be a plus. That looks like that's going to go ahead as part of the I-66 project. So I think things are falling into place, but we're going to have to monitor them and work closely on them.
What, go ahead, Mr. Dick.
Just since you're talking about small area planning process, so do you feel like the meetings that we've had up to now have laid, you know, sufficient foundation that the smaller planning process that you're going to finish by the end of this year is basically a staff-occupied process? In other words, not a lot of additional public meetings, town halls? This is not an area that has a lot of residential proximate to it of city residents? I mean, what do you, what do I tell people who ask, you know, how am I going to get my ideas into this process?
Well, we've had lots of public meetings, so the purpose of those various kickoff meetings, going all the way back to the beginning of the year with the school, talking about schools, have been to elicit that. And we've had follow-up sessions. We're going to have a work session with the Plan Commission on the 18th of September to give them an update on where we are. And frankly, I'd like to be a little further along than we are, but I think the critical pieces are, you know, land use and zoning. We do have these consultant studies that came out of the grants that we got. One is an urban design study, and the other was a transportation study. I think what we're going to look at is have those as information pieces that are appendices to the report, because they have ideas, thoughts, and some good ideas, including some design guidelines. They aren't going to become the actual recommendation, but they will guide the thinking of the city, I think. So we'll try to keep it more general and not keep it super-specific.
Other comments? Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly?
This is a timing question, and maybe this is for Mr. Shields. It's today's September 5th. What happens next with this? Does this, do we just wait now on this until November 8th after the referendum?
Well, we want to take the input from tonight's meeting. There've been some requests tonight for some clarifications. For instance, you know, having the clear list of the questions that we need to ask and when we need to answer them by. So those are things that I think we can put into this report. To answer your question, though, here's what I think we will do, and give me your feedback on this, but from your input, then we will have this roadmap as basically as a deliverable. It's been done. It will guide our actions if the voters authorize us to proceed. And so I would anticipate, under what I've described, that we would wrap this up really by the end of this week or early next week. And then this is, you know, a document that is posted on the web and as part of all of our town hall meetings during the referendum information session so that people understand, okay, if this approves, what happens next? And, you know, the Gantt charts on, you know, the Gantt chart on page three, I think, would be helpful on that. We'll probably take some of that into our PowerPoint presentations and try to make it as comprehensible and understandable for someone who hasn't been participating in this process all the way along to understand.
One thing I might say about the small area plan, I think, you know, we may, that probably isn't final-final until you've done the land use and zoning so that it can be incorporated into that. I'd see it more as a draft document. It's going to be, it's a lot of work to get there. The critical thing is you have to do the land... Critical thing is you have to do the land use zoning subdivision to convey parcels and have any rights. We can't do that without making those, making those go forward.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thanks very much. And I appreciate a very ambitious approach here, again, assuming and not commenting on the voter approval, and that's a given here. We don't do this if the voters don't approve. So I've discussed this with some folks in the development community, and they say, the kind of things you're talking about getting through in 18 months is the kind of things that often take four, five, 10 years. So how can I assure them that we're not inadvertently reducing the range of potential developers that we could get in to compete for this at the international or national or regional level? In other words, explain to me how, what your answer would be to that comment. And then secondly, more a comment for the city as we work out our timeline, I think we should be very clear about the degree of public participation and when and how that will happen. I think this is a good outline of what we need to march through in terms of moving forward with the project, but I think that needs to be married up with full public participation program, because the absence of public participation was one of the negatives about prior procedures, such as the RFP that we went through before because of statutory limitations. So let me turn it over to you all. What would you say to that question?
First of all, four to five years on a process, most developers that we would talk to and want to be interested in this would have no interest in a process that's going to take that long.
So what you're saying is the ambitiousness of the timetable actually will likely increase the participation rather than decrease the participation?
It will encourage more participation. That is correct.
Okay, great.
We just closed in July of this year a similar project in downtown Austin on a long-term ground lease. And we issued the RFP in September of 16, and we closed in July, closed meeting, signed the ground lease, and got paid in July of 17. And now, granted, that was probably one of our more efficient processes, but it was efficient for all the reasons that Jennifer was explaining to you earlier, of the things we tried to do in advance to cut down on risk and uncertainty and re-trading after you've selected somebody. So we feel pretty confident with the process being able to be actually doable, and, you know, 18 months to, you know, add, you know, plus or minus, is going to be way more attractive to the development community and attract way more people than, than a much longer term process.
And we also acknowledge it's an aggressive schedule, especially for a project of this size and complexity. And we need to be able to support you and all the other city stakeholders in making sure that we can demonstrate that we mean what we say in getting the, getting the site entitlements process done during and before we issue the solicitations. But we acknowledge it's an aggressive schedule, and we need to show people that we're serious.
Can understand my question wasn't suggesting that we take more time. It was just, as I've talked to people about this, they raised that question, and so I wanted to, people in the field, so I wanted to make sure that we got that clarified. One other comment, what's the difference between the first RFP and the second RFP? And why did we call it an RFP as opposed to an RFI or an RFQ or, you know, whatever?
So the idea behind the first document, the conceptual RFP, is just that. It's the opportunity for us to gather ideas, to gather concepts, to vet some of those, those key business terms or preferences and goals that the city is looking for before we go out with the final document. It also allows the city to qualify developers to make sure that if we do get a very robust response, we're able to down-select based on those that just don't meet the qualifications that you would want to see and that we would want to see for you at this project. Additionally, at that first stage, we would be looking for conceptual site plans, even potentially high-level massing diagrams, to give you a sense of what would be happening at the site, which could help to inform some of those requirements that you would put into that, that step two RFP. Also, at that first stage, we would likely ask for some sort of notional value, so that we could have a sense of what might be available at closing. And the massing piece and understanding the development program that they would bring to the table is critical, so that we can do an initial fiscal impact analysis and understand over time what value would be available to the city. Now that said, the reason that that's step one and not step two is that there could be some fundamental shifts. If we hear back, if we have one sense of what will be marketable, and we hear on the developer roadshow that this could be marketable, and we go out in that RFP, the first one, and we, we hear back from developers that, no, this, this component or that component or this deal term is just not going to work for us, and we make a shift and change that requirement in the second stage, that could significantly change some of the respondents' second, second proposals. And so it's not until that second phase that we ask for a final commitment of value. And that's one of the critical differences between the conceptual RFP response and the refined RFP response. Once the requirements on the city's side are refined, that's when we will be asking developers to commit to a value. We would be expecting that we'd be able to take those major deal terms that they bring in their response to that, that step two, and plop them right into that initial transaction document that will help guide the discussions and due diligence process, and ultimately should be included in your, in your ground lease or other transaction docs. Those are the key differences.
Thanks a lot. I know we've spent a lot of time on this kind of thing on the Friday meetings, but I thought it would be helpful to lay some of that out this evening. So thank you.
Other questions? All right, I've got a couple more. Let me ask you this. This would be for Mr. Shields. So the referendum, let's say, passes in November, the school architect would be started fairly short, fairly shortly thereafter, correct? Is that right? So I guess I'm trying to think is, how do these pieces need to work together? For example, this is for you all, the developer may want its footprint to be deeper or shallower, to take account of one frontage they prefer or another. How do we juggle those couple balls in the air? In other words, the school architect, November 15th is starting to draw, he wants to figure out what size, or she wants to figure out what size box they're working with. At the same time, we don't know yet from the development community where they want their frontage. You want more Route 7 frontage, you want more Haycock Road frontage? What do you want it to be, a square, a rectangle? How do we manage those two things? Do you have any thoughts on how to make sure that we have optimized both pieces, not just one?
Not a, not a really good answer right now, except you raise a phenomenal question that I don't think we've spent a lot of time thinking about. And I was just looking at the schedule here and looking at the school design occurring, you know, while we're selecting this team. So you're right, you, you would want the school architect to be sort of, to have a set of guiding principles or something around how they treat the school site, how they treat the components, the roadways and all that stuff, that at a minimum didn't infringe on the value of the other site, but preferably, you know, helped to enhance the other site. So we probably need to spend some time thinking about how to give some guidance to that, to the school designer, to make sure that they don't do anything wrong. Because we will not have had the feedback from the participants in our solicitation who, because we could say to them, hey, tell us how you would optimize value for the site, given that the school has to be, so we would probably get some great feedback, but unfortunately, the timing is flipped. So we need to spend some time, unless you guys have already thought about that, but that's a very good question. And I don't know if you guys have any more to add, but it's something that we need to figure out.
No, I think it's something we need to think more about and create maybe some rough plant, you know, guiding principles for, to basically hand to the school architect and in, in a high level convey to him or her that, listen, you know, we're going to commercialize this adjacent site, we need you to think about that in your design work. You know, and it's, it's definitely something, you know, one of, one of the specific site features I've thought about is what is the physical demarcation between the commercial site and the educational site? And is it a soft barrier, is it a hard barrier? Is there some sort of sight line between the two? And, you know, those are types of planning concepts we haven't discussed in detail yet, but it's something we definitely, you know, need to, need to talk about.
Well, I would, I would add, everything that's been said is exactly right. I would just say, I think we're a little further along, though. I mean, the feasibility study was not done in a vacuum. That was done with a lot of thought about what the needs are on the economic development side. The person, the entity that did the feasibility study had prior been partnered with a commercial entity that intended to develop the site. They've thought through these issues. So I'm not saying it's completely nailed down, but I do think here's something we need to have in our minds, is that the schools will start designing their building and their facilities starting in May of 2018. We will not have our developer on board at that time. We're talking about top-ranked possibly in October. So the schools, they need to know where they're designing the school. And so if we have any big concerns about the community school, which is the top-ranked school that came out of the feasibility study, we have between now and May to communicate that to the schools. Otherwise, they're going to start spending money to design on that footprint. So we've got some time, but that sequencing, here's the way I think it would work. The schools do need to know kind of the four corners of what it is they're designing and where they're designing it. If major issues come up, then we will all work together to solve them, and there might be some adjustments that are made to the way that, that that's proceeding. Where I think probably most of the work, however, is going to be done is on that interface area, which currently is a practice field. So there's room there to make some adjustments to that. And then two, on the roads, the roads in and out to the school. So there's plenty of opportunity with a developer in hand to work out how that road should be optimally designed to serve the school and as well as to serve the commercial interests.
And I would just say, in terms of informal conversations we've had, you know, the community school with the green space in between the school and the developed area, it has, it has opportunity in terms of how it's treated. Can it be, I think, Mr. Mayor, you asked the question, what, how many, what kinds of use could it be on the community side? Is this a turf field? How's its edge treated? I think the treatment of that and how it could be a win-win for both the commercial and the school side is important. So, and getting the parcels figured out, so schools know how much they have to work with, and the city knows how much they have to work with. That area in between, could, there is perhaps opportunity for collaboration between the development side and the school side in terms of use of that. There aren't buildings on top of it at this point, you know, could it be used for infrastructure? Could it have, you know, joint parking underneath it? We don't know, but it doesn't have a school on it, so it, it's more, more flexible potentially, if it's developed and designed correctly.
Well, I guess what I would just say is that we need to optimize both the school side and our commercial side, and you don't want to leave anything on the table. And if it turns out an extra 100 feet of Leesburg Pike frontage is worth an extra million bucks, well, I want to get it, you know, to the extent we can make a school work. And so I know architects are very creative people, and if the, if the lines seem to be, you know, moved one way or the other a little bit, I'm sure that can be done, but it's better to be done before than towards the end of your design. And so I would just let us all think a little bit about how we can work together, the school side and the city side, and what are the needs? And maybe that means taking it to some developers early on, just some draft lines of where the square would be or rectangle, and get some feedback on what's the most valuable frontage and things like that, so that we design this in an optimal way. The other thing you alluded to, Mr. Shields, is streets. And I know VDOT doesn't work fast necessarily, and other folks either, but that's pretty critical as well of creating your boxes, because you're going to want a road as the edge, probably, you know, to separate the uses. One side is a school, the other side is commercial. And so do we have any idea at all how long that process might take to, to work with VDOT to try to create a street grid that requires their approval?
I think the internal roads would be entirely under the city's jurisdiction. How they intersect with the main roads, particularly Route 7, that's a key issue. So with the stakeholder meeting that Mr. Snyder mentioned, we've been engaged with VDOT on these issues for a while. They, we know what their requirements are. The key issue is can we have a signalized intersection on Route 7 with controlled left turn in? That's, that's the big issue. And they have laid out what the variance requirements would be for that. They have not, we haven't submitted an application because we're not ready for that yet. I think that's probably the, sort of the biggest swing on how things could design, you know, go from a transportation perspective.
But how long might that take? I mean, for example, that might be, is there any issue about placement of that? You know, hey, it's too close to this other intersection, we don't want that.
Yes, those are the issues.
And so, I mean, I guess it'd be good to get some clarity on that, to give our school architects some clarity on where they might have a road coming in or out.
Well, a road without a protected left turn is probably not going to be difficult. A road with a, with a designated turn lane and a protected, a signalized intersection, that's the issue. But in terms of timing, one other thing to be thinking about is that if we have this agreement with the master developer, we then have two years before they take possession of the property. And so that's an issue where site plans get approved, you know, all the detail work gets done, but that's also the runway for getting the VDOT permits. It would be preferable to have answers to that question, though, because that's, that's really important. It's hard to get that answer from VDOT without all the data they're going to need of exactly what do you, how many trips, et cetera, et cetera. And so we've tried to get sort of a notional answer from them, but they, they've not been willing to give us that.
I mean, it's, I'm not so concerned about the two years of the developer, I'm more concerned with a couple months with the school architect. So if a road ends up poking down more towards the school, then maybe your school needs to move. Anyway, I guess there's a lot of balls in the air, and I think we ought to be thinking about them. I know we all are, but really putting some timetables on when we have to get answers so that we don't slow some other part of the process up. And that's really the point of just raising those issues. Ms. Oliver?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make an observation. Every time we have this discussion, you are the one person on council who is not happy with the current location of the school. And I'm not saying that you don't raise good points, but I just did want to make clear that all the community vetting process that's gone on, I think the general outlines of what we're doing are fairly set in most people's minds, although the questions that you've raised are good to pin down as quickly as possible. But, I mean, it is the case that you are the person who's least comfortable with the way the planning has gone and where the school has ended up being located.
Well, I'd just clarify, I absolutely am not uncomfortable with the general location of the school, but as a developer, real estate attorney, I can tell you that 100 feet one way or the other can have a major impact on the value you can achieve for your property. And like they say in real estate, location, 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 and there's someone who may want more frontage on Lee Highway, willing to pay millions of dollars more to have that. So I think we ought to be cognizant of those issues, but I'm entirely happy with the general location of the school. But I think we ought to be thinking about those kind of things, and particularly road placement, because if you don't have access, you don't create value. So that's the purpose of my points. Are there other comments or questions? Anybody else? Bob? All right, listen, thanks so much for your comments and your great work, and we'll be talking to you soon, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Can we take a?
Two notes in conclusion.
Thank you. The Economic Working Group, which was chartered by the city council and the school board, has had tens of meetings really since last spring. And were very active in the valuation studies, sort of just reviewing that and overseeing that process, and then met last week to review this roadmap before it came to the council. One of the discussions was about what their charter will be in the next phases, and I think that's a discussion we can have a number, another night, but we should, we should address that. They've been very helpful through this point in the process. And then two, as a public notice, we will have a town hall meeting on Sunday at 4:00 PM. It's the first in a series, but this one will actually be sponsored by the city and the schools. I will be there, and the superintendent will be there, just to talk about access to information, which is really sort of to kick off what we anticipate will be a whole series of meetings by the League of Women Voters, candidate forums, the PTA, all sorts of public meetings. as a lead-up to the referendum. This Sunday at 4:00, we'll just lay out how people can find information, what information is available, and help people navigate that and try to make it be more accessible. It'll be at the high school in the auditorium.
Unless there's anything else, thanks again. We really appreciate your good work.
Could we take a five-minute stretch, please?
Sure. Let's take a five-minute break.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and get back at it? I'm sorry that break took a little bit longer than five minutes, but why don't we get started on our next item, which is the Railroad Avenue cottages application? Mr. Shields, is there a staff report, or how are we going to handle this? Thank you, Mayor. Chartering members of council. There was a request by council just as work prior to your meeting on September 11th to have this on the work session agenda, so we could provide a quick update and then answer any questions that the council might have. This is scheduled, it has been advertised for final consideration by the city council on your next regular meeting on September 11th. And of course, what we're talking about is the application for a special exception to allow cottages on Railroad Avenue. The main thing that we do have as an update since your August 14th meeting is that we have received a license agreement from the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority. It's being reviewed right now. We do find that the license agreement is very much what we expected, and its terms are generally acceptable to the city. What it basically calls for is it grants a license to use additional right-of-way in addition to what has already been deeded as an easement to the city for Railroad Avenue as a public street. And it lays out what the expectations are, that it would be, grass pavers would be installed by the cottages developer. And then, those grass pavers would be then turned over to the city after inspection by the park authority and by inspection by the city, and the city then would maintain them going forward. There are a few details that we want to work through. One of those is the length of time that the city would have in terms of notice if that license were to be amended or even revoked. And the only, the reason that this is in the form of a license as opposed to an easement is because of the nature of the federal grants that were used by the park authority when the park was created, that they are not willing to grant a further easement in addition to what has already been granted to the city. Therefore, the license is the approach that's being taken. Carol McCoskeri is working with the park authority on those last details, but we think they're on a good track and that that license will be finalized prior to your meeting on September 11th. A couple of other issues that are addressed in the staff report, we have had some discussions with the park authority about, you know, probably the only thing that might influence this license in the future, at least one thing that you could reasonably foresee, is if there were trail widening or other improvements to the trail. As the council knows, we are planning to have trail widening east of the WNOD bridge in the city. And it is possible that in future years that there'll be trail widening by this part of the trail as well. And so, that's really kind of the, if the license were to be amended, that's probably the context in which that might happen. So, in addition to this license, I have asked staff to reach out to property owners to discuss easements on the south side of Railroad Avenue. This is a longer-term project. We know that those property owners have fences, they might have shrubs, they might have trees, and they might not be willing to grant easements on the south side of Railroad Avenue. But the intent of that approach would be, over time, to put together additional right-of-way on the south side of the street, A, to provide better access to these properties, even if we don't lose the license, but also if, for some reason, that license were to be revoked in the future, we would have another option. But I think the key thing for those neighbors to understand is that we are hoping that those easements would be donated, and we'd be patient and work with landowners and have a long-term plan to try to get that widening. There are a few other issues listed in the staff report from line 39 through 60, which were questions that were asked or issues that were raised at the August 14th meeting. I won't read through all of those, but if there are any questions about those, again, tonight, we'd be happy to discuss those. Those are, I think, some of the key things we wanted to convey to the council tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of you I've spoken to individually, just to let you know that over the August recess, I have visited with, oh, probably in the end, maybe 15 to 18 of the folks who are proximate to this application site, and people on Railroad, people on Fowler, people on Ellison. And I've sort of condensed their views down into five questions that I would talk about probably next Monday. Won't take the time to go through them here tonight, but I'm happy to talk with anybody individually if they want a little report on the discussion. I had some good discussions with people, you know. Obviously, we're getting feedback by emails, and I'm not saying that people are all peachy keen about it, but at least I feel like the effort was worth it to identify for myself what their main concerns are, and happily to see, as far as my perspective, those concerns addressed, responded to in the staff report that we got tonight. Just want to ask a couple of questions. One, I asked the city attorney if by the time of our next meeting, she could just give us a reading on what was our legislative intent when we passed the ordinance about all parking being contained onsite? Is that all parking, lack of residence, all parking for any conceivable need? What did we mean? What is, is that a term of art? Is it a term of law? And as McCoskeri has said, that she'll follow up with an answer to that. Speaks to the concerns that a number of folks have about, you know, what happens on special occasions, where are people going to park? Did we really intend that every conceivable use would be parked onsite? Second, I guess I should know about this, but the trail widening east of the bridge is something that's, you know, a settled deal, right? So, we have pictures of what it looks like and how, what's the extent of the work that they're going to be doing to widen the trail? Is that a knowable thing? I mean...
The goal is to separate the pedestrians from the bicyclists, but we have in the adopted WNOD plan a concept for that. The park authority would like to do it and would like to do it as a pilot in the City Falls Church, but there aren't detailed plans on that yet.
Okay, all right. That much I'm familiar with, even, I mean, there have been some walking paths parallel to the bike trails for a little while, for some of the stretch through the city. At any rate, I feel like we're at the beginning of what will be a long and fruitful relationship with the Park, Nova Parks, over, you know, how the bike trail may change and adapt and evolve and so, but just the geography of it, what they might do east of the bridge wouldn't seem to me to, you know, impinge on the fairly substantial amount of land that's available west of the bridge. At any rate, if that's only conceptual, I suppose it's further down the road, and maybe there's nothing more to show folks. That was a question that some of the neighbors asked, what are their specific plans? And just a couple of little things. The applicant presented a picture of four single-family homes as another option, and some have asked whether that really would be doable, given the amount of land and access to the land that's there. You know, would it be three homes or four homes? I said that I would ask, you know, is that purely the applicant's notion, or is that, you know, a realistic possibility? I think the staff report says that, you know, that would have to be something considered by the planning commission, is, would that be an extraordinary consider or just a sort of normal subdivision consideration? And, oh, one last thing. In the application materials, there's a reference to the developer being willing to work with Nova Parks on a Western Gateway project of some, you know, again, conceived but not detailed planned nature. If we have any more information on that, the access to the trail up by Gordon Road, you know, if you're on Fowler Avenue and you take a little dog leg on the trail, connects you to Gordon, that is the pathway to the school and everything that the kids who live in that neighborhood take. And there's not much sidewalk infrastructure there once you get out of the city. You know, the sidewalk basically ends at the corner of Fowler and Ellison. It's sort of like on the way to West Falls Church back in the old days, when, you know, we had a sidewalk up Grove Avenue, which then ended and the county had nothing, all the way, the rest up the hill and over to Haycock. So, I'm just wondering if, in the long range, we might have conversations with the county about improving pedestrian access there along Fowler to the bike trail. Doesn't have to necessarily be a sidewalk, but just a more, it's not even really paved very well on that last stretch of Fowler as it approaches the bike trail. So, I think that's, there was a question about the board fence, and is the, are the Dorsey's, I met with the Dorsey's, are they satisfied now with the fence that would block the lights from the carport that would be next to their property? And, oh, yeah, one last thing, sorry. The reference again in the application to a plaque about the historic use of the site is just tossed in there. I would actually like to know a little bit more about that, if we have any background I've learned. I met with Mary Rector Whitney, who is one of the women who grew up on, she's 87 now, she grew up on Railroad Avenue, was one of 16 children, I think, and I think paid the taxes on the land that her family controlled for many years. At any rate, very interesting woman, of course. Has some great stories about what the area was like in the, you know, like the teens and the 20s. And I would just like to know a little bit more about, you know, the history of this site. I understand there might be some information in the Fence and Fireside book, haven't had a chance to look that up, but just as part of the application, to help explain at least why I am, you know, motivated to try to make improvements in this area, because they, in my view, are a long time coming. I'd like to know a little bit more about what we plan to say in terms of the history of the site. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I had a few. Based on my read of the staff report, the handicap space that I think we asked about last time is, it sounds like all the spaces meet the ADA requirements, if not another foot wider than what's required. Is that the plan to address the concern we had about not having a designated handicap space?
The designate, I believe that's been resolved. The building official has reviewed that question and is comfortable that there's space for the parking that's needed. The issue came up about the community building, because it does have a place where guests can stay, and whether that needed an ADA space. The building official is satisfied that that is going to be an issue that can be addressed at site plan and that there's not a concern there.
So, while we're on the topic of parking, I think that's been one of the key concerns we've heard from the neighborhood about parking and overflow. Is the current plan not to do the overflow parking until a year after the project is done and we determine there's a need for it? That's a recommendation from staff?
Yes, that's the planning commission's recommendation, and staff concurs with that recommendation, and we complicated things with one further recommendation, and that is that the fire marshal also would weigh in ultimately before those spaces are converted into parking spaces. If that were under consideration a year after approval, and the fire marshal would make a determination whether that area needed to be kept clear for public safety vehicle access. So, that's the kind of addendum we've made to the planning commission recommendation.
So, one of the things I remember discussing probably earlier in the summer was, I think the developer had mentioned, based on the potential buyers that were interested in the cottages, and I think being upfront with the marketing materials that, you know, the site's only going to offer one parking space per cottage, they didn't think that people were going to exceed that need. Both, I guess there's some self-selection, obviously. If you know you're only going to get one parking space, you either go down to one car or figure out, or don't buy the property. Has there been an update on that, whether we think that's really confirmed based on what the market wants to do? Because I think there's still some skepticism from the community that says, you know, gosh, I just don't believe people are going to have one car. I don't know if we've heard or had further discussions about potential buyers or people in the community who might be interested in moving into this development.
I can speak to it just from a code perspective, in that the application meets the parking code, and we understand there's some skepticism about that. But that really goes to the spirit of what this housing type is supposed to be, and that's why the code was written that way with the staff recommendation. In terms of any further information on the marketing and things like that, I'd have to defer to the applicant on that.
Definitely we should do, can we do that now in work session, or?
Can we ask the applicant that question?
Figure while you're here.
Since you're here.
As I understand it, the question is, have we done any more marketing with respect to how many cars people are going to have?
Or just heard feedback from potential buyers of whether, you know, that's going to work for them, or whether that, you know, people are really even going to want to come in with two cars.
Well, I think, as you've already said, it's pretty clear to anybody who might be interested in buying here, that they're really not going to be able to park two cars on the site. We have talked with many people who are potential buyers. Obviously, we can't sign contracts, we can't do anything until we have an approval. If only the special exception, not to mention a site plan and building permits and all that. I think the notion of self-selection is exactly the right one. I don't think anybody kind of in their right mind, if they want to have two cars, is going to buy in this location. We don't think that'll be impediment to our actually marketing the property, because we think there are a lot of people who only have one car now, or if they have two cars, we've worked very hard to try to provide ways that they can get rid of the second car.
Thank you. Stormwater. So, my understanding of where we are with stormwater is that the VCs provided say that they won't worsen any stormwater issues kind of in the neighborhood, but they won't improve it either due to easement issues. But I think, I think I read in the VCs that you guys are committed to kind of trying to secure easements within 90 days, I think even after. Is there an update on that? I mean, my concern is ultimately, if we're going to be disturbing the land, it's a great time to solve the stormwater thing, and I, stormwater issues, and, you know, help the neighborhood in the process. Is there anything the city can do to help facilitate this? Because I think this would be a great win for the city and the neighborhood if we can actually address flooding issues in that part of town.
Do you have an update on easement?
Well, I don't really have an update. The, I've never heard a determination from the Dorsey's next door as to whether they would permit it, but my sense is they probably would. But the really critical one is to the rear, that owner has put his property on the market and doesn't want the area disturbed while he has it on the market. We have, having heard that, we nevertheless elected to leave that voluntary concession in and allow some time to pass in the hope that maybe somebody else will buy it and will think this is a very good idea. We're perfectly willing to do the work. We believe that the work we would do, even not including that, will have a positive effect on stormwater in that general area.
Why, did you have anything to add from a staff perspective?
Well, to really solve the problems, we need those easements. What can be done onsite, we'll do everything we can on the site. Certainly, it's going to comply with code, with detention, permeable pavers, buyer retention, all those things that we have in our toolkit under the code today. But to improve the situation, we need an outfall that would go through that easement. And... But to improve the situation, we need an outfall that would go through that easement. And so we would like to continue to work on that easement issue as well. We think that's the best solution. But until that happens, what we, where we are is that it would not be made worse and that is a code requirement.
My last question slash comment is, having read through all the neighborhood concerns, it seems like a lot of the concerns are less about the actual specific project because I think in both staff's perspective and applicant's perspective, the proposal actually meets the code that we had approved last year. You know, we checked the box on parking requirements, on green space, on density, but yet ultimately we keep hearing the concerns are those three areas. And so I think maybe something for us to consider is, you know, do we need to revisit at some point the cottage housing ordinance again? Like, because if we think that there's issues with the density or parking green space, that I think it's concerns about the code and less about this project itself because ultimately I think when we read through what the proposal for the project is, it does meet the requirements of what we outlined in the code. I remember that when we passed it, we said that we wouldn't do any housing cottage projects within a year afterwards so that we could evaluate how this first one goes. So I just want to make sure we keep that in mind. You know, it seems like a lot of the concerns I keep reading go back to just concerns with the policy itself and the code that we had outlined and not a concern necessarily with the project because the project is, you know, meeting those requirements. So it's something for us to consider because I remember we did have the discussion that we would revisit the cottage housing ordinance after the first project. Some more of a comment.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Duncan?
Just wanted to follow up on that stormwater question. Could, Wyatt, could, my conversations with the folks there who have put their house up for sale indicated a certain lack of clarity about whether they had formally been asked for an easement. Now, this has been a couple of weeks ago. Could you just, is it possible that staff could circle back to them? And I thought what you said was good, you know, we're going to keep working on it. Maybe it's not going to get solved, you know, in the next six days, but I would just, you know, like to have that by the time of our next Monday meeting. I don't run the meeting. All I do is ask the questions.
If you get, very briefly, if you get some...
My name is Julie Harrison. I live at 1220 Ellison. I know for a fact their realtor advised them not to grant an easement and they were told that they should wait till the new owners decide whether to grant an easement or not.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, that's, that's some version of what I heard, but, you know, not the complete version. So if you could just follow up with the staff, if, if you feel it's appropriate. If it's not appropriate to do at this stage, then that's fine with me too. Finally, on the sales price, which is a question that has been raised, one thing that is not in the cottage ordinance is any criteria related to fiscal impact. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we don't really have anything to say on that issue except the cottage ordinance does not put any allegations or expectations on us or an applicant in terms of the pricing of the product. Is that, is that correct? We don't really have any language in there that says, you know, it needs to be market affordable or market aligned or anything. I mean, basically, this is, this is a private enterprise activity and the market dictates what the asking price is and what the sales price will be.
Yeah, that's correct. The policy driver behind the cottages, however, was to provide a new type of housing type for, that was age restricted and was intended to be part, I think, of a larger strategy of, of keeping that demographic in the city. And so fiscal impact was not a policy driver at the time of adoption of the ordinance. We've also noted in prior staff reports that as a practical matter, measuring the fiscal impact of three single-family houses versus 11 units is not the way the model is designed to be used and would not produce a statistically reliable result.
Okay, well, I invite anybody who doesn't live on my side of town to come, come over that way and note the new house or the house that's just been put up on the block just past the shopping center, which is a stone Quonset hut, which I think the asking price is more than $650,000. So, you know, I don't know what the market will bear on this new housing product, but, you know, this is not something that, that I feel competent to weigh in on and, and the, you know, ordinance doesn't require us to. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
This is more of a comment than a question. I just want to note the large number of comments we've gotten from community members, sometimes the same community members with concerns. I want to thank Mr. Duncan for taking a lot of time to meet with people and being an ambassador from council to the people. I know a lot of them in your own neighborhood, but thank you very much for doing that. And also, I want to let people know who have sent messages to council that they have all been received. We get a constant daily email flow of traffic from the city clerk that all those messages are coming into council. So even though the packet tonight is the ordinance and the staff notes, there's a lot more behind that that we are receiving and considering as we go along.
Okay, other, Mr. Snyder?
Sure. So let me talk about the fire safety issue and let's make sure that we've, we've got that nailed down. So exactly how wide does the fire department need for that street?
I believe 18 feet is the, is the width that the fire marshal has stated would be what we need for this street.
Okay, and how wide is the street now?
Currently, the easement is for 12 feet.
So if you get the park easement and assuming that it's satisfied, how much are we asking for from the park?
Six feet.
Six feet. And so if they need some of that in the future, they reserve the possibility of pulling that, of reducing that or eliminating it, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And our only option at that point is to ask the adjoining property owners on the other side to grant easements.
That is correct.
Okay. I do have a continuing issue on the fire safety situation. So usually by this time, by second reading of special exceptions, the neighborhood has come around because of a lot of negotiations and a lot of discussions. And yet this one, we continue to have significant neighborhood opposition, which apparently seems to be driven by the density and the number of units as much as anything and the requirement that that therefore puts on various aspects of the project. So I'll just state that as an issue and I would hope between now and when we act on it that somehow there can be some negotiation on that. But in any way, that, that, I'd like to see the neighborhood more in support of this. Not that they have a veto, but that they're, generally speaking, neighborhoods by this time are more in support of the project than seems to be the case here. Finally, a specific question. On the west side where we talk about the fencing, has that been agreed to by the neighbor for whom the fencing was intended to be a solution?
I don't want to speak for the neighbor and so I know that those discussions did occur and they were, there was an exchange of information and direct dialogue on the fence. Where we are today is described there at line 45. That's what the description of the screening is. So I don't, I don't want to characterize what the neighbor thinks about that. I don't know if there are others that could, but...
Thank you.
Ms. Harrison, are you the adjoining neighbor?
I'm not, but they're referencing Stephanie from Dorsey and she's told me repeatedly that she wants a solid wall and I believe she's emailed to that effect as well.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what's been proposed.
Okay.
So it's a, this is the seven-foot board-on-board fence?
No.
So this is...
Solid wood.
Okay.
Seven-foot solid wood, two feet of lattice.
Okay. Okay, are there any other comments or questions? All right, listen, thank you very much for coming out. Is there anything else, Mr. Shields, you want to say?
Nope, I think that's it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could take two minutes to address just a couple of the issues that Councilor Duncan raised. On the issue of the plaque, the wording has been submitted to staff. We've consulted with Ed Henderson to get his input and he made some very helpful modifications, but that language is available for anybody who would like to see it. With respect to the four versus three single-family dwellings, we demonstrated some months ago, submitted to staff, had it reviewed by staff, that indeed that property could be resubdivided into four single-family houses by right. So it's not, it's not an iffy issue. It's, it could be four single-family houses. We also submitted quite a bit of information about fiscal impact, number of expected students and so on. I participated in some meetings along with staff and several phone conversations with, with Park Authority. It's my understanding that the widening to the east of the bridge is somewhere in the future. They, I don't believe, have the money. My understanding is that's their, they've now adopted a plan. They hope to implement it over a significant period of time. When we were in one of our meetings, again with staff present, we actually measured out with the staff of the Park Authority if they were to widen the, put the second lane in, if you will, on the western side, how that would impact the six-foot easement. And the answer was, it wouldn't. So I just want to provide that information. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just, I'm sorry, one other thing. Wyatt, the house between the Dorsey's and the Coos' house, the one that's being torn down and replaced with a new house, those folks who I have not talked with have been asked, would they provide an easement? And I just, you know, again, if by the time we vote Monday, we have any updates on whether they would do that, it would be helpful.
I can report tonight they have not agreed to that.
Okay.
I'll provide an update next week.
Okay, thanks. All right, is there anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've heard two different answers to my question on fire safety. Could I ask the city manager to nail this down? We've just heard the developer say that even if the Park Authority were to expand as they might and as they plan to in the future, I think they definitely said that they're going to have to do that, that even so, that would still leave an adequate amount of time to provide for fire safety. And yet the answer that I heard before that was somewhat different. So can I get a very specific answer on that question? I don't need it tonight, but I would need it before we take a final vote on it.
Okay. Well, let me answer it tonight and then we'll, we'll confirm this. In our basic conceptual ideas on how a double trail could work on the WOD property, we believe that that could be designed without impacting the six-foot license area. Now, that's sort of our basis, you know, our view just on how much space is available and how that could work, that there's adequate space to do that. That's, that's what I would say in terms of how, you know, do we foresee anything that's going to imperil that license? We're not aware of anything right now that the Park Authority is planning to do that would imperil that license.
Could you make a final check with the Park Authority and report back in connection? This is too important to just leave on, you know, this is our assumption. We need to really nail this down. It's too important.
Okay, but I will say this, at the, what matters, though, is what the license says. So what I say in terms of what's likely to happen or what's not likely to happen, it's worth only that much. What really matters is what are the words on the page say and what we're granted is a license that can be revoked. And, and that will be the legal status of that license.
If I could just ask one question, the city attorney. Are you comfortable with the different covenants and the work as relates to the age restrictions and the like? I know we've had some discussions previously about that. It could be a simple answer if that's...
Yes, I am. I've, we've reviewed those over time and I think that we have gotten enough assurances in the voluntary conditions as well as in the condo documents, the declaration of covenants, that they will be enforcing the age restrictions and there will, including nobody under 18, and that's a legal restriction.
And the city has a right to enforce as well through the condominium documents?
That's correct. Well, our right will come through the voluntary concessions, but they've also agreed that they would get the city's permission before they changed any of the provisions in the condo documents on the age restriction.
Okay. All right, is there anything else? If not, thank you all for your time on this matter. Want to move on to the next item, Mr. Shields?
On the agenda before the closed session is a resolution to declare the council's intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of, of future debt issuance. And so Ms. Bawa is here to describe this for you, and so I'll turn it straight over to her.
Good evening, council members. The full CIP that was adopted and approved by council in July included miscellaneous general government projects as well as the high school, the George Mason. So we are getting ready to issue the, as part of wanting to issue just one issuance instead of doing two separate, one for the general government and one for the schools, we would like to obviously wait for the, we have to, for the referendum and then, should that pass, to one issuance in early spring. In the past, after the capital improvement program budget has been adopted and the amendments have been adopted in July, we have normally done fall issuance and that has been around October or so. So we have not seen the need for this, except it was done once before. This allows the city to reimburse itself. We'll spend on the projects now. The list of projects is provided in the staff report and then the city would like to, would have the, would be allowed to reimburse itself from the bond proceeds once received. We're looking at a timeframe of early spring for issuance by February or March. So it would be all within the same fiscal year and no net impact to the general fund balance as far as the accounting and auditing is a concern for the fiscal year.
I'm sorry, I'm a bit slow. Could you explain just a little more? I'm not sure I totally followed what you just said.
Okay, so the general government projects like the public safety firearms range, I'll give some examples, the library project, the vehicles procurement for police, the turf , Larry Graves turf, those projects are ready to proceed in some form or manner and they may start expending funds immediately. In fact, the firearms range, we have received the invoice from Fairfax. So we are, so this, adoption of this resolution by council today serves as your intent to spend, your intent to bond for these projects, except the timing is pending the issuance, the bond referendum. So...
So we would proceed with these, we would pay cash and then that would draw down fund balance, but before the end of the fiscal year, we'll have issued bonds and we'll pay ourselves back. So fund balance will go back to the level that it's supposed to be.
And what's the term of the bonds you propose to issue?
Well, that'll be a separate action that will come to you and it'll be a basket of them, you know, the vehicles...
The vehicles will be very short-term, five years. The, you know, the, the other items typically would be 20 years.
Okay, so this will, each one will have their own bond or will they be grouped together?
They'd be grouped together.
So I guess more of a rudimentary question. There was an assumption here that it's bad to issue bonds separately, so the assumption that we should be grouping this with the school bond referendum? Is it just more expensive for us to issue it separately?
Yeah, if we do separately, we could do bank acquired loans now for these projects. However, you know, so it's going to exceed more than 10 million. We have the city hall project in this, so it's not going to be as, it's going to cost 10 or 20 basis points more. I've consulted with the financial advisors. So to keep our costs, the legal costs as well as the issuance cost under check, it would be to our benefit to issue it once.
Okay, so we save money by doing one bond issuance, but these projects have to start now, so we're going to pay it in cash and then promise to pay ourselves back when we issue the bond in the spring.
Right.
Got it. Thank you.
What's the interest rates, the interest rate approximately, do you think? What's the interest rates, the interest rate approximately do you think will be paid at this point? What's the rate right now in a 20-year bond?
Three and a half is what we are hearing right now, in that range. And there is a lot of stuff going on. The Congress may approve some of the, that, I think it's the...
Unwinding?
Say that again.
Are you talking about the unwinding?
Yeah, exactly. So if that happens in December, it could have some impact in spring with some increase, potential increase, but at the same time, we have not, the municipal bond market does not usually match the rest of the interest rates, so it's possible that we will be able to capture the lower rates even in January. From what I understand, January is one of the better times to issue for, you know, bond issuances, so if...
I guess I just wanted to just give some thought to the idea that we'll have different bonds. We've got a lot of money we might be borrowing in the near future. Is how we can either layer these or have them, and I forget the term for when you basically prepay it. I can't, what is that term?
Prepay is in...
You pay off the bond, like you don't have to keep it for...
You buy down debt.
You have the ability to prepay it early.
What is that called? I can't remember, I'm just...
Call, that's a call.
A callable bond, right. So is there any thought that we should do some of these in callable so that we could, in other words, take advantage of fluctuations, interest rates? For example, let's say interest rates go down, maybe we want to pay off this one and use that borrowing capacity for something else that may come down the pike. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right, yes.
Do we want to consider flexibility in some of these? If we've got a ladder of different bonds, that we may want to pay, we'll pay off the highest interest rate one possibly, get rid of that debt, even though it may have a longer term, because it's better financially for the city. Have we given any thought to that at all? Like whether we should do, you know, like a callable bond on some of these smaller ones?
Yeah, I'm working with Davenport to look at various options on how to structure the bonds, and that will include, you know, looking at the terms, looking at what the interest rates are, if we could issue calls. Sometimes we are allowed to have calls, like five to seven years, but if we want longer, it could cost us more, so we're looking at those options. And at some point, we probably will bring it to council as part of the bond issuance resolution that'll come hopefully in November.
Because it seems to me like we really ought to be thinking, particularly now, given that we may have a lot of debt coming up, of how to structure it so that we can, you know, maximize the yields, the returns that we have, and the costs that we have. So I'm certainly not smart enough to do that, but I'm hopefully one of you guys on the other side of the table.
You know, we're, we're spending a ton of time thinking about all of these issues, and Davenport is well aware of the big picture, and so they're working through options so that we've got the best, the best deal for the city. And, but I guess they, to your point, typically a municipality wouldn't want to call something too quickly. We may want to, and so that's part, that will be part of our thinking.
Mr. Z?
I like this concept. I, you know, I'm glad that you're able to track the fund balance to such a degree of detail that you're able to say that you have the cash on hand and obviously have a time window next spring when you would be reimbursing the fund balance within the same fiscal year. Have we done this before? Issue the resolution that, you know, pre-obligates the, potentially a future council?
We've, we've definitely done it before. I'm trying to think of when it was, but in the last four years, I believe we've done it.
2013.
2013, okay. So, you know, there are four people that may not be here next spring, and so assuming we're all case here, then you could have these four brand-new people that would disavow this, and then what?
Then we'd have a big hit to fund balance.
That's what I thought your answer would be.
And one thing I will say, all these numbers on here, these are the full CIP costs. We will not have expended this much money by the time we plan to issue in the, in the spring, but we thought we would just lay out clearly what the full, what the full cost is.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you so much.
Ms. Oliver?
Is it not the case that we approve these expenditures in the budget in April?
Yes, the expenditures have already been approved.
And when we approve them, because these items were in the CIP, we said we did have any information about the financing in them, the assumptions about financing.
The assumption was that it was going to be debt financed, but no more than that.
Right, okay.
Other comments, questions? Okay, well, listen, thank you for sticking around with us. We appreciate it and for your fine work. Council schedule requests, are there any council comments about our schedule?
So are you having a mayor's meeting in the morning? All right, I had several things to catch up from over August, but I think I'll just wait until tomorrow to raise them.
8:30, I think.
Is there, is there a plan to resume the economic working, Economic Development Working Committee? Friday morning meetings, anytime?
We had one last, I guess, 10 days ago, right?
Right.
So is there one scheduled for this Friday, Wyatt?
We don't have an active agenda planned. I think the next thing to do really between now and the referendum would be possibly just ongoing discussions with developers, although I think what we are finding is, we had a great period of time in the spring where we had some very interesting conversations with both academics and developers who would be in the market. I think as we've gotten close to the referendum, the developers are a little bit more shy about coming and sort of sharing their thoughts, because they might be actually out there making real plans right now, and they don't feel like the timing is right to come in a public meeting and describe that. That's the sense I'm getting, because we're having, you know, we're calling them up to invite them, and whereas four months ago, people were happy to come, now they're, they're a little bit more, would like to take a little bit more time.
So what maybe I would suggest is the Marcel and, or Alvarez and Marcel is going to come up with a list of questions they thought we ought to answer and get input on. I think we ought to be, the Economic Working Group ought to be, take, chewing on those questions and trying to give as much insight and frame questions and frame answers, and be able to get them out to the public as soon as possible. So I think we ought to continue those Friday morning meetings as much as we're able to, to, to work through all those questions and issues, because it's a pretty ambitious timetable we've got.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Any amount of time you could, you could devote to addressing the issues of entitlements, of disstructure, and getting to those core questions that would lend itself to increasingly risk would be, would be helpful. And lastly, I think that, you know, putting these really top-notch consultants on ice for a period of two, three months is, may not be the wisest course of action.
If I could just make one comment. Those meetings were scheduled at a time that conflicts every third Friday with the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and there is a proposal to shift the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. I would just ask that at the mayor's meeting tomorrow, which I will not be able to attend, that we make an effort to update the committee meetings on this schedule, so that everybody is aware. There are currently no committee meetings on this schedule.
Okay, other vice mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, I, I will say this at next week's city council meeting, but the schools wish to thank the Department of Public Works for the help that they've given at Mount Daniel, and I just want to say that now. Robert Goff and his crew were up at Mount Daniel last week, helping with numerous different things to help that school open on time. They were there almost a whole day doing all sorts of things. They put in a bench for the teacher shuttle, they moved a shed, they laid some asphalt, and they were really helpful, and school staff asked me just to express their gratitude for that. So I wanted to do that publicly. And that's all for the moment.
Of one, seeing Ms. Muster here, you'd sent, I think you, somebody sent a note around to us about the history panels on the transit, what do we call it? Multimodal transit?
It's the South Washington Streetcape Improvement and Transit Plaza CIP project.
Yeah, what she said. So you sent around a really long email, which has like 20 separate, and I haven't had a chance to read them yet, but I did scroll to the bottom and read the bottom one, which is basically kind of about the current day. And it, it seemed a little underwhelming, so I just wanted to throw that flag up about that. I'd like a chance to look at that. My mother-in-law, of course, read every single one of them, and probably will give you an annotated response, but I just read the last one, and what occurred to me was that the vision statement that we labored so mightily over and produced a fine document might be a launching pad for whatever we say about the false church of the present and future in that last panel.
That would be super, and thank you for bringing that up. You did probably receive that one from the city clerk's office, but we are doing a full social media push and website posting on the draft text that has been put together by a group of community members representing Historical Commission, the False Church Arts, Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation, the Humanities Council. And so we are in the formal public comment period, because we are looking for solicitation in those pieces. We've done a lot on the history, tying in the transit, and we want to end strong. So those feedback is most welcome. We haven't done the You Are Here map and the chronology piece, because we wanted to get this other comment. So that would be great. This is our federal, state, and locally funded project that will do the undergrounding, which has started in South Washington, the full streetscape intersection, and then end with the transit plaza with four panels, eight sides, and you're referring to the historical texts and photos that'll be engraved in those. So we are definitely looking for public comment and input.
I thought it was pretty good. I thought it was quite good.
Pretty exciting, the amount of history that we can sell down to as concise as we can. We had novels when we started.
There's a couple of typos in there.
Sure.
Okay.
We will do a full final grammar read afterwards, but we're really looking for comments. So they're on the website. We're going to post them out here in the hallway. They are at Kensington, and we're reaching out to Lincoln at Tanner Hill to see if we can put them in their empty storefronts, so they'll have a lot of community visibility, as well as the social media push.
I didn't see a panel on this council, though, yet. I guess you're still working on that one.
It's one of those present...
That was what, that was the one I was referring. I, you know, the Mayor Tarter era, or...
That history is being written, hasn't it?
Exactly, really. Well, I mean, the, the last panel, I covered everything since, I mean, I'll have to read the 19 previous. I'm sure, you know, we have an illustrious history, I know that, but, you know. The last panel seemed to encompass everything since, like, we were incorporated, and that seemed to be a little... Anyway, we got to get...
Actually, I had to pare down, because we have a whole lot of history and books to pull out the Civil War, and we wanted to make sure it balanced the founding all the way to current. So thank you for the feedback, and we welcome any and all from the community.
I'm, I'm voting for that vision statement. That's where, it needs to be etched in some stones, some stone somewhere, you know.
Big glass.
Needs to be a monument, you know.
What's your deadline on comments?
Number 30th.
Okay. Were we going to get a fire department after-action report?
Yes, we were hoping to do that tonight. The director of the Arlington County Emergency Operations Center will come and present to the council directly. That couldn't be arranged tonight. We're getting that scheduled either next week or the week after.
The week after, when are we voting on Railroad Avenue?
What he will be reporting on is the communication breakdown for that specific 911 call, what happened, and what they're doing to address it. It really is a separate issue than the road width issue.
Yeah, but so I thought, I mean, at least my request was, what did you think about how the trucks got down there? And was it safe? Did it take too long with respect to what's there now? In other words, I believe someone opined that this is okay as far as fire department is concerned. In other words, this road as it exists, I believe, that's my recollection, that, that was opined to when this whole ball got started rolling down the hill. And we've actually had some real-world experience now, which is a fire on that street, or whatever you might want to call it. And I guess I was interested to find out what the professionals thought of the, you know, narrow width and how that worked with, you know, did it impede the fighting of a fire because you didn't have adequate width to turn around, or to bring trucks side by side, or whatever you do to fight a fire? That's what I, the information I was looking for, and I was under the impression I might be getting it prior to a vote, but doesn't sound like that's a fair...
Well, the information from the fire marshal is in the staff report, and, you know, that write-up describes his views of it. And those views were arrived at after consultation with both Arlington County Fire and Fairfax County Fire. They met on the site, not during a fire, but on the site to discuss access. There have been two 911 calls there in the last year, one for a car that crashed into the building that's being torn down at 1,000 Railroad Avenue, and then the fire that occurred in August. So those are two real-world examples. It's not ideal, there's no question about it. But in terms of, you know, the firefighters and the EMTs, I think they, I think what we can state publicly is, I'm sorry, that's not the way to phrase it. What the professional view of it is, is what's expressed in the staff report.
So the staff report does include the after-hours or after-action report from the fire in August that, you know, occurred several houses down from this development?
It certainly informs with the way the fire marshal views it. I don't think that incident is explicitly addressed in the staff report.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, did someone analyze this after the fact and say, wow, you know what, I thought before we actually had a fire down here, everything was great, but, you know, turns out when the fire trucks showed up here, they couldn't go side by side, then impeded the flow of water because the pumpers, or whatever it is. Did anyone look at it after the fact?
It, it has been. Let me follow up with them. They were not planning to speak to that.
They don't have to, I don't really have to have a person speaking. I'd just like to know the benefit of their insight analyzing the circumstance of it. I mean, someone doesn't have to publicly show up, but if someone would just write, you know what, everything I said six months ago is still true after analyzing what happened on August 24th, or whatever day the fire was, that's fine. Or, you know what, based on the fire, I actually think that it really is important that we do these other steps. Or I withdraw a part of my recommendation because I feel, having observed a fire there, that you can't do this, that we want to do, or it's going to take an extra five minutes, whatever it is. I would just like the benefit of some kind of analysis of what actually occurred on a fire on the same street a couple of weeks ago, or a month ago, or whatever it was. They don't have to turn up. I don't want, you know, the chief of somebody's fire department sitting in a council meeting for four hours, but if they would just let us know the benefit of their thoughts, I personally at least would be interested in hearing what they have to say.
And then I think also, separately from that, the after-action report on the communications breakdown is important for us to hear.
Okay, anything else, or shall we go on our closed session?
I just had a quick scheduling thing. October 9th, I thought we were meeting October 10th instead because of the holiday. But actually, a related question, maybe for both city attorney and city managers. Do we have to celebrate Columbus Day? I know that there's kind of a movement among communities to actually recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. So maybe as a state, because we're part of Virginia, we have to recognize it, but if there's something that we can look into to passing a resolution to recognize that?
One, the date on, my computer's been corrected to the 10th. I think this is an older version. So that will be on Tuesday, not on Monday. And let me get back with you on that. What the council has done is, by ordinance, said we follow the state holidays. Now, could the council do something different? I think you can, so let me get back with you on that.
Mr. Snyder?
Two quick things. First of all, Wyatt, I wonder if you could do a quick briefing on our next meeting on how the city prepares for natural disasters? And just to run over quickly, the, some of the dynamics, it's been a few years. Spent a lot of time in our emergency center at one point, and climate changed, and it's changed back again. So that might be useful for people. Where would they get information, encouraging people to sign up to our email list, you know, sort of renewing that whole focus, because we may be forced to, whether we want to or not. Second point is bus shelters. A couple of places, I'm wondering the status, Maple and Broad, and, and then there's one in front of the bank. That's the one in front of the CVS and the bank. Both of those are bus stops that are pretty significantly used, and the question is, do we, can we, are they on the list? Will it ever have the kind of bus stop protection that we have elsewhere? Finally, Fairfax County and a number of jurisdictions have started a citizen program of informing citizens on what they can do if they actually are the first there during a, it could be everything from a motor vehicle crash to a mass casualty incident. And I understand that we may be doing some training, and I think it would be good to see... that we may be doing some training, and I think it would be good to see what that is and how we can expand it throughout the community. And finally, a note, I saw Chief Gavin at the bus stop this morning for the kids, it was just great, so, very positive. Last time I saw police at a bus stop was a few years ago, and it wasn't a pleasant circumstance, so this one is very good, so thanks for that. Pass it on to the chief.
Okay, anything else, or should we go into closed session?
Oh, one more thing. I'm sorry. NVTC has a metro resolution. Cindy, could you circulate that to the council members, and if anybody has any questions or concerns about it, please let me know.
Okay, how about now? Can we go on to the...
I'm going to give him a Columbo hat and raincoat.
All right. Did somebody have another thing, or is this, okay. All right, let's go on. We've got a closed session tonight, so let's go ahead on to that.
Is the subject closed session?
Closed, yes. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and read the motion for a closed session then. Upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Connolly. And seconded by council member...
Hardy.
All right, Hardy. And passed by a voice vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711A3, if that answers your question, for discussion of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically acquisition of 604 South Oak Street. Councilmember Connolly.
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver.
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder.
Yes.
Councilmember Z.
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter, yes. Okay, do we need to turn off the mics and do that for a minute or two? All right. Upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Seconded by council member...
Hardy.
Hardy. And passed by a vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly.
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver.
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder.
Yes.
Councilmember Z.
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter. Certification upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Z. And seconded by council member...
Tarter.
Connolly.
Okay. And passed upon affirmative roll-call vote, an open session was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the city council. Councilmember Connolly.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Oliver.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Z.
Yes.
Tarter, yes. Okay.